Since it is 7:01, I'm going to officially call our meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Carlisle Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, February 8. And I want to quickly review the agenda. We'll start with community input, so if there's anyone on the call right now that would like to make a comment or offer any kind of input to the select board. When I'm done reviewing the agenda, you can just either raise your hand or you can indicate on the reactions button. And I'll call on you. Then we'll have an update from Chief Fisher for the LEPC. And then we are going to hear from Christine Lear about the creation of the Transfer Station Action Committee, followed by a conversation with the ARPA Committee about the criteria they're thinking about using and want our input on as they make decisions about what projects to recommend to us. And then the Carlisle Governance Task Force, we're going to have Rebecca here to just review with us where they are in the word articles they want to propose. We'll be meeting with the potential search firm, Community Paradigm, who may be helping us with the search for both an interim and a permanent town administrator. Then Allison Saylor will be here with the Friends of Center Park. Tim will do his town administrators' report, we'll have liaison reports, and then approval of the minutes and warrants, and with the goal of adjourning by 9:45. So, welcome all. And with that, I'd like to ask if there is anyone on the call now that would like to offer any input. Again, you can put your video on or raise your hand, or just hit the reactions button and raise your hand. I am not seeing anyone. So I think we will move on then. And Chief Fisher, thank you very much for joining us, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much for having me this evening. So the LEPC met yesterday. And some things have changed pretty substantially since our meeting two weeks ago. We met two weeks ago, the cases in Carlisle were very, very high. And probably most of you remember, there was, it looked like a busy bank drive-through at the fire station for all the fantastic work our firefighters were doing, testing people in the PCR. So, but in the last couple of weeks, this has waned significantly. So Linda Fantasia did report from the Board of Health side that they too have noticed, you know, while the last, the month prior, probably prior to those two weeks ago, we hit our highest numbers. It's, I think she used the term drop-off, like a ledge. It's, so it's, it's dropped down significantly. There still are cases coming to her attention, which coincides with what Chief Soros reported from the Fire Department. They're still doing probably seven, he said seven to 25. He said the high days have been 25, but most days somewhere around seven PCR tests, which of course is significantly less than he was doing a month ago when we were when he was really doing a lot. So the other activities, safe activities in town, proceeding as planned, COA provided an excellent report on what they're doing. Their numbers seem really good, the same with the library. Schools, their cases are also down. They still have some cases. They had seven cases last week. But Jim O'Shea reported that things, things do seem to be settling down there. And they're, they're talking about reviewing the social distancing policies they had in place in the cafeteria, thinking of losing those a little bit. And there were no reports of any critical staff members out with COVID for any of the departments, which was a good, good sign. Then we spent some time at the end of the meeting talking about the necessity to continue our bi-weekly meetings. As you folks probably remember, you know, during the height of this, when we were trying to figure this out, we were, we're meeting weekly, sometimes every couple of days. And most of you on this call were actually there. Most of you have spent a significant amount of your time working on safe planning for our town. So I appreciate that, I want to thank you all. But what we've decided to do is drop this meeting back to monthly. So the LEPC will meet the Monday prior to the first select board meeting on that Tuesday. So I think our next meeting will be on Monday, March 7th, and we'll continue to meet at 10:00 AM. That which is, which is good news for a lot of people, especially our esteemed volunteer clerk Christine Lear. So maybe she can get a grasp on the carpal tunnel that she's been fighting with typing all these minutes. But in seriousness, I do want to thank everyone for their planning. And we do reserve the right, the LEPC did reserve the right to go back to more frequent meetings if we need to. But right now, I guess we're feeling pretty good about where we are. So thank you very much for hearing me out on this. And does anybody have any specific questions?
I have a, I have a statement I'd like to make if you guys can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Nathan, thank you.
So not being one of the people who spent endless hours on, you know, this emergency and in these meetings and everything, I really, really want to echo what you just said, Chief Fisher. Thank you very much for all the work that you put into this. You brought us so far, you know, hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, we're, you know, we're almost through it. And I just want to thank you all for your tireless efforts, the updates that we got every single week, you know, from the minute and everything. Thank you, thank you very, very much.
Well, I got a couple of thumbs up, but it's the people on this call, that half the people on this call are the people on the committee. So I'll they gave a thumbs up, Nathan, I don't know if you can see them, but in any event, they received your accolades, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Have a good evening. Of course, you're welcome to stay for the Christine Lear's part. All right, so with that segue, Christine, would you care to share with us the, your thoughts about the creation of the Transfer Station Action Committee?
I definitely would. As we all know, the Transfer Station Task Force was asked to look at several aspects of the transfer station for the last six months or so, and come up with some recommendations to the select board. Great committee, smart people, eager to people to, people were eager to work and get things done. And so we found there are lots of things that could really help citizens of Carlisle be better at recycling and to make, take better advantage of the transfer station. But it just seemed like more than we should ask the current staff to do at the DPW. So we thought it would be great if the, the, the transfer station had an action committee behind it so that we could not only implement some of the things that the, the task force identified, but to also be an ongoing support to all the efforts at the transfer station to keep abreast of, of different things that happen in terms of the world of recycling, or, you know, how we can do research that the staff just doesn't have the time to do. Although, that being said, that's an amazingly well-run transfer station. So we don't mean, we just want to tighten things up and communicate a little bit stronger. So we were thinking of that the, the task, the action committee could do things like new signage for the whole site, move things around just a little bit to give us some more room to navigate while you're at the transfer station, and then to beef up the website, and then to do like an ongoing PR campaign through the newspaper and sandwich boards to really let people know how powerful they are, just in the way they sort their trash, to help the environment and to minimize the cost of us getting rid of solid waste in Carlisle. So it's very exciting, and I think most of the people want to apply for this, this committee from the task force, which is very encouraging, although I will say that, so we asked the Household Recycling Committee if they would fold their efforts into this action committee if it were sanctioned by the select board. So they said yes, which is awesome, because they have decades of experience to bring to the table. But Bob Wallhagen has decided he does not want to move on to this new committee at this time from the the Household Recycling. So Barney, I think you got that note from me. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, or Barney, if you think I missed anything, please let me know.
No, I don't think you missed anything, Christine, and I'm just wondering, Tim, is it possible to post the motion? That Christine and I and
Tom Bellata.
Tom Bellata crafted a, a sort of a charge for this new committee, which we, was in everybody's packet. And if we could
I have one quick question about the chart. Luke, isn't TSAC, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, TSAC?
Yeah, technically, yeah, I think
I'm just wondering if we could find a new, you know,
A different name for this, so it's not
You know, because if we start talking about TSAC, we won't know who's, who's on first.
Well, come on, Kate, you didn't come up with a, you didn't have a suggestion?
Well,
I'm just teasing you.
Could I interject? I think that while we, we refer to it as TSAC, I think it's actually the Traffic and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So I think TP SAC is what it actually is.
As in toilet paper?
Well, maybe that should be the Transfer Station Committee.
Well, we could, we could call this the Dump Action Committee, the DAC.
No, 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 no. All right, I just, I just wanted to be sure that down the line, we don't have confusion when, so we should be calling the other one the T and P SAC. And then this one could be this, staying the TSAC, I just didn't want to confuse.
That was a really good catch, Kate.
Oh, I know, I'm just
Sharp as a tack.
I'll catch everything.
So I'm, I'm wondering if someone would be willing to make a motion, and then we can have any further discussion we want before we take a vote.
Yeah, I, just the, the charge is kind of messy. It refers to, you know, the, the report, and then it refers to board minutes. It's just, can we have, I mean, they should be very specific, right? I mean, we're not voting on anything tonight. I mean, it doesn't matter if this happens tonight. Can we, can we just, I mean, we, you know, usually we spend a while going through charges, so they're very specific. You know, I mean, it's there's just a
Well, I think the idea was, Luke, that the, the report, the task force recommendations, you know, is a fairly long document, and it has a whole bunch of specific recommendations, all of which, except for one, were approved by the select board, you know, two weeks ago. So the idea was just to there are a couple of broad statements here, and then the specifics are, would be in the, in the task force recommendation report.
It seems like we could just bullet that stuff out. I mean, while there's detail in the report, I mean, you can get kind of boom, 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 bullet points, no? I mean, I, I just, I don't know of any other charter that refers to a report and that refers to meeting minutes and all. It's just, it's not a very clean charter. You know? I mean, I, you know, I don't mean to sound, usually I don't care about these things, but like, but, but they always, honestly, they always come back to bite us in the ass when they aren't clear, right? So, so
That's why this is clear.
Yeah, but, but not for somebody picking up that charter, they don't know what they have to do. They have to find a, they have to find meeting minutes, right? So that, that's, that's where it's just, it's not clear.
Got it.
It should have, you know, it doesn't need to have the, you know, a huge level of detail, but it can say improved signage, blah, 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 right? You know, and then, then there's actual action items. You know, especially if that's specifically what this, what this committee is supposed to do, right? I mean, you know, we're not, we don't have to vote on it tonight. I mean, we only have two people, and then obviously it's going to go out, you know?
Well, there are, there are a bunch of people on the task force that are sort of waiting for this to get approved, to then submit their letters of interest. But
I mean, they can still
Yeah, we could try to it may be, Luke, you know what happens to people that make suggestions? Maybe we need your help in, I, we, Christine, I think you and I could probably take another crack at this, don't you think? And then we could run it by Mr. Oskalilo and see if the right direction.
I mean, I think it's literally just pulling out the, you know, the things that it refers to, and just putting in bullets as to what, what the tasks actually are. I mean, it's just, it's just making it clear and specific, right? Otherwise, it's, it's not. You know, I mean, it's just we, yeah, I'm sorry. It just seems like
Somebody else trying to hold on a second, Luke, Nathan, are you trying to comment?
I was trying to tie my comment to when Luke was going to talk each time. I think one way, I think one way to look at it is if somebody goes to the website and they look at the, at all the committees, they should be able to see right there on that one page, everything that the committee does.
Okay, but this is very broad, you know, this commit, that task force came up with a lot of good, broad recommendations. We can put them on one.
It doesn't have to say every recommendation, right? You can just pick the big one, because the charter isn't a task list, because this is an ongoing thing. So you don't, we don't want to write it so that when they're, you know, when they've done the bullets, it's all, you know, the, the chart, you know, the committee's done. You know, implementing, the implementing the committee's chart, you know, the committee's thing is just one bullet, and then, you know, whatever else we want to put in there. But, you know, it shouldn't be a task list, right? It's just, it's what is, what is this committee responsible for?
Yeah.
Christine put something in the chat.
Yeah, but go ahead, Christine, what did you want to say?
Just what Kate said, look in the chat, see what you think of that, Luke.
I was going to read it. Respect for the environment is an important value to Carlisle residents. The transfer station is an essential town asset in relation to providing optimal opportunities to properly dispose of solid waste and recycle whenever possible. The Carlisle Transfer Station Action Committee will provide administrative support, community outreach, and education to maximize recycling and minimize solid waste.
That's pretty broad still.
I was gonna say, that's, that's very broad now, right? But, but, you know, to Nathan's point, if you want to make it broad, right? So, because obviously when they go through the list, right, it's things change. You know, if you want to make it broad enough, so you don't have to, you know, rewrite the charter every time, you know, then, you know, then, then I think something like that is fine. It's, but again, but then it's almost too broad. But, but, you know, if that's what you want, that's what you want. I, you know, I, like, I don't know. I mean, I either we want this committee to be an ongoing thing, or we want him to implement the, the recommendations of the, the task force. If we wanted to be broad, which I'm actually more in support of that, because it's to Nathan's point, then it doesn't just end, right? You know, so, so then, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm more supportive of what Christine wrote than
Which, which I didn't actually write. I lifted it from what we determined was the actual charter, very detailed charter. It was the opening paragraph. So Luke, what if we took this paragraph? And then added to it just a sentence that said something, referring something to the proposal from the task force as accepted by the select board.
Yeah, or, yeah, just, or even just implementing, you know, implementing the recommendations of the Transfer Station Task Force as approved by the select board, you know, just something along those lines. Because if it is an ongoing thing, right? Then, you know, as you guys come up with new things, and, you know, we okay it, right? You want it to be able to just slide in. So, yeah.
I would add another, I would add another bullet that says, and, and make other, and make other recommendations as appropriate.
Yeah, so it's not just implementing the report, it's any other projects or proposals that come up that would make sense to have the select board approve, yeah.
Yeah, so then is the, is the Transfer Station Task Force going to go away?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay.
Yeah, they, because that, that group had a specific charge, and it ended with submitting their recommendations to the select board.
Yeah, yeah, see, so that's the thing, right? So ultimately, this is going to be the implementation and recommendation arm afterwards, right?
Right, yeah, which is what, what was being, we were trying to say in the first description that you weren't so wild about.
Yeah, well, it's, the, the first part's fine. It's all the, refer to this and review that, and look at this, and that, so, yeah.
All right, so, so Barney, you and I will work on that, but, but I do think I'd like Luke to bless it before we move forward.
Yeah. That sounds good.
I would encourage you to, to encourage the, anybody you think wants to be on this to send us letters in between. Don't, I wouldn't do this in, in series, I would do this now in parallel.
Yeah.
Good, I think that makes sense too, so that hopefully we could approve the charge at the next meeting along with approving some members to be on the committee. Okay, great, are we all set on this? Any other comments? All right, excellent. Thank you, Christine.
I think you guys just want me to keep coming back, that's what I
That's exactly what it is.
All right, well, it's a little early, but I think I saw Scott on the call.
Scott's down there, he's the orange.
Oh, there you are, hi, Scott, yeah, hi.
John is also here, I believe.
Oh, is that John one? Okay, so we have the ARPA Committee here, Scott Triola, the Chair, John Kaufman, hi. And then our select board member, Kate Reed. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Scott, and if you want to share the, the screen with him, Tim, he can put up the criteria, or you could do that, either way.
Either way, I can Share the, I, I do want to run through some background.
Okay, great.
Get into the criteria, but this is also posted as a, as an ARPA Committee meeting, so I'll call that meeting to order. And again, our, our focus tonight is talking about prioritization criteria. As our committee starts to look at the individual funding requests and starts to put together our recommendations, we want to make sure that we're in alignment with the select board's goals, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Before we get into that discussion, I just wanted to take a few minutes to do a recap of what ARPA is, what's changed since you may have last paid attention to ARPA, and a quick update on our process. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, and let's see if do you guys see that slide then?
Yes.
We do.
So I wanted to start back at the beginning and just remind everyone, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's a $1.9 trillion economic stimulus package that was signed into law in March of last year. As part of ARPA, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds were set up. That's the SLFRF, since we're coming from what TSAC, now we'll have even more consonants for you guys to worry about. But you'll see the two U's, the SLFRF is part of ARPA, and that's 350 billion. Of the 1.9 trillion was allocated to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to quote, "support their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency." So Carlisle's SLFRF allocation, and that was determined by the amount going to Massachusetts, and then, and distributed by population, is $1.57 million. We've received the first tranche of that allocation, 50%, in, I believe it was around September of 2021. We received those funds, and we will receive the second 50% 12 months after receiving the first 50%. And the one little wrinkle here I'll point out is that we're lucky in that we're in Middlesex County, and Middlesex County elected to, basically counties got an appropriation, and Middlesex decided to just pass that through the towns. There are many other counties in the state that did not do that, and they're actually holding the town's money. So you may hear about that. For us, we're getting all the money directly, so we'll get the entirety of the 1.57 million, 50%. We already have 50% in 12 months. And then these funds have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and ultimately expended by December 31st, 2026. Now, the SLFRF, and this is something I've come to appreciate, and I, all of our committee members, we've been sitting in webinars, we've been reading these US Department of Treasury documents. But what's interesting is that the, the SLFRF is, is a, is a federal grant, albeit a very unique one. And it's unique in that it's the reverse of your typical grant process, wherein we receive the funds first, then they issued the guidelines and finalized the guidelines about how the money can be spent. And the last step in the process is for us to decide what to do with those funds, and ultimately report back to the US Treasury Department that, how we use them. So typically in a grant process, you apply for the grant, you discuss the terms, and then the last step is you get the money. This is different in that we got the money first, and now we're deciding how to spend it. But it's still a federal grant. And so what that means is that in Carlisle, a select board has the spending approval authority. This does not go before town meeting. This is, because it's a grant, you have the authority to spend it. It, it falls under all the provisions of Section 53A, which I don't really have an appreciation of, but it's subject to all the requirements of that. It's subject to federal contract and procurement laws. And finally, all these expenditures are subject to the same audit standards and requirements as any other federal grant. So even though we have the money in hand, and there is reporting to the US Treasury, in all other respects, it's still a federal grant. Up until recently, we were working under what were called the interim rules. So they created these funds, and then they issued interim rules. And then on January 6th, they issued the final rule, which is basically the final rules of engagement and guidelines for using these funds. And the big change here, as it pertains to Carlisle, was they added a $10 million standard allocation option for the revenue replacement category. Originally, you could claim revenue replacement, and I won't get into it, but it required this complex calculation. And for Carlisle, our sense was we really wouldn't be able to apply many funds based on this calculation. With this standard allocation, Carlisle and other towns, we can elect to use up to 100% of our funds for revenue replacement, because we only have 1.5 million in funds. We could decide to apply that all as revenue replacement. And funds allocated to revenue replacement, the, the guideline from the Treasury Department is they can be used to provide government services. And what they mean by government services is literally traditional services traditionally provided by the government. So pretty much anything we would spend money on, you can use these funds for. And, and for that reason, it's the most flexible category. It also has streamlined reporting requirements. There is a portal we use to report projects back to the US Treasury. If you select revenue replacement, those projects require the least amount of information and ongoing reporting. So for this reason, it's a very attractive category, because A, it's very flexible, and B, it requires relatively less reporting. The final rule also contained other adjustments in various areas of eligibility, mostly expanding some things in some areas, but essentially tweaks were made, nothing as major as the $10 million standard allocation. And those other categories are responding to public health and economic impacts, premium pay, responding to public health and economic impacts, premium pay, water and sewer infrastructure, and broadband infrastructure. So again, you can elect to put money into revenue replacement, or you can fund a project through one of these categories. And each of these categories and subcategories have different requirements about what you have to track or report on an ongoing basis, and some of them are more complex than others. One thing I will say, and this was true before, and it's true now, the one thing, even though you can use it on under revenue replacement for general government services, you cannot use funds to offset a tax cut to make a deposit into a pension fund for debt service or replenishing financial reserves for satisfaction of settlements or judgments. There's some question about whether you could use it for OPEB. That's still being investigated, but essentially, this is the carve out the US Treasury has articulated for what you can't use it on. Looking at Carlisle, I'm just going to take a minute to talk about our process and key dates for context. So in November, we sent out the ARPA letter, and the funding request form was distributed to the town and also posted on the town website. On January 6, as I said, the final rule was issued by the US Treasury. On January 7, that was our first funding request submission deadline, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide. Tonight, we're talking about prioritization. As we move into March and April, my goal is that our committee begins making funding recommendations, particularly because as we roll into April, we have two things. We have town meeting, and it's important that we look at some of the funding recommendations as they could impact funding requests being made at town meeting. And so whenever there's that overlap, we want to coordinate as much as possible. And then on April 30, the first annual project and expenditure report is due to the US Treasury. As we look forward, September of October of next year, where we see the second half of our funding in 2024, all funds need to be obligated. And as a TBD, I did want to point out, our intention is to have future funding request deadlines where people can request additional funding through this. We just haven't set those. So, you know, I think for now, what we're trying to do is really work toward being able to start to make recommendations in March, April, particularly those that may impact requests being made at town meeting, and that relates to some infrastructure requests. As I said, our first submission deadline was in January. We received 29 funding requests totaling $2.6 million. John put together a spreadsheet encapsulating all these requests and rolled up the totals, and I don't want to get into the specific requests. All I'm going to say is that we did get requests from a wide variety of town departments. We also got requests from some nonprofits. And I was pleased to see kind of the breadth of requests being made. The submission materials themselves, and I'll make these these slides available. They're all located on a Google Drive. If if you or anyone watching wants to go read them, they can be located using this link. So we're at the point where, you know, we're continuing to learn about ARPA and get interpretations of the final rule to understand strategically the best way to approach individual requests. But in looking initially at the requests and having some discussions around all this, we agree that it was important that we first articulate and then communicate criteria for how we're going to assess these requests, and it's important to involve the select board in this, because ultimately, you will be making the final approvals. We will recommend, we will make our recommendations, but you are the body that approves any actual funding. So it's important that as we look at these projects as the ARPA committee, we're in alignment with your goals. And so I had distributed the prioritization criteria that we had drafted last week at our ARPA meeting, and at this point, we're going to go into a discussion about that. I'll just take a pause to ask any other committee members, Kate or John, if you have anything you want to add from a a context standpoint.
No, I just want to say I have learned more about federal program than I ever thought I ever wanted to know about anything. And I want to actually just thank Scott because he said in probably more webinars that I have, and he just presented this very nicely and clearly, and then hopefully, you guys have now, you know, in his presentation have gotten as far as we have in months of studying this, so. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. That was clear.
It's depressing when you distill weeks of scrutiny into slides. But there, you know, I will say that having, you know, been involved in the finance committee for so many years, I continue to be skeptical about all the leeway being given, but as we go through this, it does appear that there is a lot of leeway in terms of how we can use those funds. And I think we're at the point where we're just trying to get clarity on some very specific elements, just so we we're not we're not doing, we're not painting ourselves into any corners initially, but I'm optimistic that we can use, A, we'll get all the funds, and B, we can use them in a in a in a wide variety of ways.
Can I make just another little additional comment? Or yes, and I think we haven't really discussed it, but I think it's come about through some of the meetings that you went to, and I went to, that a lot of the, almost all of the projects, this is one of the questions I have, is all of the projects can be funded through this lost revenue formula that we're talking about, where under this $10 million, everything can go through in this one simple process. And that all, at this point in time, nothing's been decided, but all of the projects could fit within that parameter. It is my understanding that's that's possible.
Yeah, it's interesting, because when when you look at the 29 requests we've gotten to date, we do have some that are from nonprofits that you at first blush, you would say, well, we don't Carlisle doesn't traditionally give a grant in that way. In a recent call, however, one of the MMA people running the webinar basically viewed it as, no, we see supporting nonprofits as part of government services. So most of the requests we've gotten squarely fall within that, within government services. There's a few that don't, but even those, it seems like we could do through revenue replacement.
I think that's an important thing to consider anyway.
Yeah. So with that, I'll just talk through, and please chime in, Kate and John, as we go through these criteria. One second, gotta go back over here. Okay, so, and these are in no particular order. One, obviously, when we look at a specific request, the amount of the request itself is important. We have everything ranging from a $5,000 request to a $600,000 request. So the amount of the request in absolute terms is an important consideration. But also, as we look at the cost of a project, the availability of alternative funding is is something we need to consider. Particularly, as I said, there's a $1.9 trillion ARPA plan. There's, we have our little piece of it, but the state also has its piece, and even today, they announced they're they're sending out $500 checks to people that meet low income thresholds. So there there is additional funding at the state level available for some of these projects. There are other grants available. So as we look at how to use ARPA funds, we are going to be drilling down onto that to see if if there are funding, other funding sources available that that could be used prior to ARPA. And obviously, the the cost benefit ratio of the request, and this this last part came out of, you know, we might have a request that's relatively small with relatively minor impact relative to some other ones, but when you look at the ratio of the cost, the small expense to the benefit, it's actually a very worthwhile thing to do. So again, it's really looking at the the inherent value and absolute cost of each project. Another thing we've been talking about is that we want ultimately our funding recommendations to support multiple functions and communities in Carlisle that have been negatively impacted by COVID. And part of what we want to look at as we go through this process is making sure that you know, we are we're not loading everything into you know, one particular area, or putting it all in infrastructure, or putting it all into this department or this community. We want to make an effort to ensure that we're we're attacking the opportunities in multiple areas. And so, all things being equal, if we have a request, two requests that are similar scope, but one is is in an area that really hasn't been served through these funds prior to that, that's something we would we would consider, because we do want to we do want to approach this in different ways, and we do have a variety of requests from a variety of parts of town. And so we think we think representing that in the funding recommendations is important. It's also putting the FinCom hat on. And this is something you you see echoed in other towns, and even in some of the recommendations in the webinars, is that when you're funding something through through the the ARPA funds, that you're using the money not to subsidize ongoing operating expenses, but you're you're really putting them into discrete projects that that can be completed within the funding timeframe and do not require an ongoing expense. This is much like we view capital investments or long term caps. You don't want to use these quote unquote one time ARPA funds to to create new expenses that then need to be funded from other sources after we've we've depleted the ARPA fund. So it's something that I know I'm pretty focused on, putting my FinCom hat on, but it's also best practices for how to use these funds. These are intended to really attack problems and help the recovery from COVID over the next, you know, two to three years. And finally, you know, a big part of the original ARPA initiative, even though it may not necessarily all tracked back to COVID, was there, you know, one of the guiding principles was to invest in infrastructure, particularly air quality. They also carved out water and water treatment and sewage. But I think as we look at the opportunities within Carlisle, and also our town needs air quality and other infrastructure projects, we have a long list of infrastructure projects that have been prioritized and scrutinized. And as we as as a committee, as we look at the ARPA requests that overlap those, we want to put a focus on projects that have been vetted and prioritized by the people looking at them, including the facilities committee, the Carlisle School and FinCom, that these again are nonrecurring expenditures targeted towards strategically important long term assets that provide benefits over many years. So if you look at our requests, we have a lot of HVAC, we have a lot of there's water treatment that is part of the municipal facilities plan and also overlaps into the opportunity for ARPA funding. And so the projects that that fall within this category are ones that that we would prioritize. What's not on this list? Again, you know, I've been pretty vocal about, we have requests that might be deemed operating expenses or nonrelated to COVID that I believe should go through the budgeting process. I think it's important that you know, we're not promoting a workaround to the normal budgeting process, and that we're focusing our recommendations on funds that are related to COVID and the recovery and rebuilding from the pandemic. And if we use if we use funds for previously identified opportunities, that those opportunities have already gone through essentially the budgeting process and have been vetted and prioritized. And that's what I have to say about that.
So do you want to open the floor now, Scott, and just have a discussion about these criteria?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you for that presentation.
Do you want me to leave this up, or do you want me to stop share so we can?
Let's leave it up for a few minutes. And and we may want to go back to just seeing the gallery of faces, but other select board members, anyone want to start us off?
I was just gonna ask, can you can you forward that link that has the the specific request? Is that is that what that link has? Does that have all of that, or is that?
You mean like John Kaufman's? Yeah, his spreadsheet?
Yeah, would you would it be possible?
Oh, the link on the bottom of that slide. Yeah, that that link.
Yeah, just, you know, I, because obviously, one stands out here. Sorry. You know, but
Well, okay, I mean, I don't want to get too caught up on that, but
No, 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 and it's it's just, it's more for, you know, us to kind of just see what 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 people are fishing for. You know, at least I maybe I'm the only one that wants to see it. I'm just curious as to what some of these requests are. But no, I definitely like the prioritization and having it be, you know, projects that are thoroughly vetted, you know, and and things that have already undergone review. Obviously, there'll probably be a few of that pop in, but you know, it's it's that whole thing, you know, you don't want to spend just because you have it, right? And and, you know, I mean, I think, so then, and also, thank you guys for for doing all of this. And yes, Scott, it's nice to have you. You know, with your experience with FinCom, kind of pulling all this together. So so thank you for that. But yeah, no, I just, I fully agree with the, you know, the thoroughly vetted piece. Like I said, there'd probably be some stuff that you know, just makes sense, right? But yeah, it's, you know, it's it's always the easy thing when you you seem to have this budget, and obviously, we've got, you know, three very responsible folks on on the committee, but you know, it's kind of a knee jerk. Oh, we got to spend it. Yeah, but but we got to spend it wisely, and and, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we've been kicking down the road for a lot of years. You know, that we just haven't had the cash for. So hopefully, you know, we can get some of those off of our plate, but we'll see, you know.
And I would I would add to that. You know, as I mentioned, we have you don't have to commit these funds for a couple of years.
Right.
And I, as a committee, we've formally talked about really focusing on the money we have in the bank. So even if we had an endless list of things we wanted to do, you know, I don't think we would recommend more than the 750,000 that we had gotten, and and we wouldn't. With some of the changes and some of the flexibility, if we do put it in revenue replacement, it gives us more time and flexibility to spend it. So we don't want to, we don't want to sit around and hold the money, but we don't, we certainly don't want to rush to spend it.
Right, yeah, no, great.
The ones that are priority to me, at least in looking at initially, are the ones where if we do have infrastructure projects, we want to fund. We have infrastructure warrants at town meeting.
Yeah.
And it raises the question of if we fund infrastructure through ARPA, is that in addition to what we're asking the town for? Or do we adjust what we're asking the town for?
Yeah.
And that's a conversation that those are the ones that I think are important to get ahead of so that we can be prepared for town meetings.
Yeah. So I haven't looked through the particular requests, Scott and Kate and John, but I really like the number two criteria where you're looking for you want to fund things that support multiple functions and and different constituencies of Carlisle that have been impacted by COVID. And I don't know if you have a sense yet whether some of the requests are overlapping and that they you could you could go back and suggest there'd be, you know, some more sort of cooperative or, you know, team oriented request so that you, you know, in a sense, you get more bang for the buck. But I I very much support the idea of trying to have have the funding that is approved affect a really broad swath of the town that's been impacted by COVID.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things you know, I've even I had gotten a question from the CO, a follow up question from the COA. There's also a lot of cases where, you know, I had made mention in a previous meeting that was extensively reported on, that the, you know, one area that I thought was underrepresented in the initial request was Council on Aging and the senior population. And part of that comment is born out of the fact that when we initially put out the submission form And part of that comment is born out of the fact that when we initially put out the submission form and request for funding requests. We were still operating under this idea that everything had to fall within one of those eligibility buckets and we couldn't use revenue replacement. So we were tied, we were asking people articulate how this relates to one of the predefined uses. Um, since then, obviously, as, as we've learned, we can put money under revenue replacement. I think we should ask some groups to think about how they could use funds because there may be uses that originally they thought wouldn't be eligible. That we can now fund. And so I think that's going to generate, uh, some discussion.
Yeah. And do you anticipate, um, sort of encouraging new requests to come in? Fairly soon? Or are you thinking after town meeting? Or where are you on that?
Uh, I, I mean, I, as, as we sit here now, I think. The first, you know, we want to look at the requests that we have and, and figure out. Um, you know, which ones we want to do. I, I think we want to do an initial assessment of the requests we have. But also start to identify, um, I don't think, you know, I don't. Again, I, I had a pretty, I, I gave some preliminary thoughts that, that was, uh, that you, you may have all read about, but. You know, when I looked at what I would rec, you know, back of the envelope, what I would recommend, it didn't total up to. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was something less than that. So.
Yeah.
I think we should, we should, we should vet the requests we have and start these discussions, um, with other groups versus opening up like another.
Yeah.
Official submission deadline.
Yeah.
Because the other flexible, you know, because you, the select board approves these things, these aren't also, these are also not tied to the. The town meeting budget schedule where everything has to be approved on, you know, in April, and then it's, you can spend it in July. I mean, these are things that. On a meeting by meeting basis, you could be approving funds. So again, there's no need to kind of. We wanted to, we wanted to identify as many requests as we could at the outset, just to get a sense of.
Mm-hmm.
These out there, but going forward, we can hopefully work through those and also start to entertain new, new ideas as we go.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And if I can also add and ask the, the, the select board that you have to also consider the timing of these things in the sense that there's certain. Requests, if you like, that are more urgent than others. And I think that there's certain demand that, you know, that the money could help certain groups in particular. In the short term, that would be beneficial to them now and help them now, uh, whether it's financial aid or, or, or. Health, mental health, they're all kind of these concerns that have been raised by some of these communities and. That require a bit, you know, uh, it, it would be better to do it sooner rather than later in this particular, in these particular cases. So not everything is. As Scott's saying, you don't have to spend it all now. You can, you can also prioritize things in a way that would have the most benefit to the town.
Yeah, you know, in a, in a way you're almost, um. Or it sounds to me like another consideration and maybe it goes under the first bullet is just urgency. Um, right? The, the urgency of the need, um, or the request.
Yeah. Yeah. And that being said, like. I'd say of the initial request, there, there is urgency inherent to all of them. There was nothing that was. I would deem. Anything that would require a decision prior to the, the timeline we had originally outlined. If that makes sense. Um, that's not to say something won't come up in the next week or month. But as it sits here, as it sits now, I mean, my urgent, you've heard my urgency is around figuring out how to leverage. Projects that might impact town meeting. To me, that's the highest need right now, um, in terms of timeline. And then obviously as there's. As we, as we look through these, um. Other needs may arise, but again, like the, the whole. The final law or final rule really kind of for towns like Carlisle, they just kind of. Essentially reset the whole program. Um, I mean, like, I mean, in a good way, in a, in a good way that. It really, it, it allows us to do a wide variety of things. And it takes away this feeling of, oh, we're just going to have to figure out how to spend the money, even if we don't have. You know, a ton of eligible projects. We didn't want to waste it. You don't have to worry about that at all now. And it also changes, I think, how you think about. Using these funds.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't negate the request we've already gotten, but it does open up. New opportunities.
Other select board members?
And Kelly, uh, Kelly's gotten involved and has, has begun looking into the audit side. Another nice thing is it doesn't appear like we're going to need. Extensive external support for this. We talked about in an earlier meeting. You know, would you support using whatever, some amount of funds to hire a consultant to help us? Um, I think that need is lessened, given the flexibility of revenue replacement.
Yeah. Are you still, um, considering, uh, using, is it MAPC that it had offered?
Uh, yeah, and I, I had talked to one of the principals there and. I think where we're at right now is I, I think through our auditors at CLA and through some of the support that they provide. I think we're going to see if we can get the answers we need. Um. Powers and Sullivan was the group that could help. Um, their original intent was to help towns like Carlisle with their revenue replacement calculations. Um, which they were estimating would take thirty to forty hours per community. Um, and that kind of went away. And so now they're, in his words, well, we'll honor our obligation. But, um, they can help us if we need them, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be what they originally envisioned.
Yeah. Other comments?
Yeah, this is David. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, great. So hey, absolutely great work, Charlie. Thank you so much. Um, I think that you are spot on with the prioritization. I'm not going to comment at all about the, the requests that have already been put in because it's going to go through your prioritization process. The, the one aspect I would have, and I think that it was in what you were saying, Scott, is that, um, just making sure that, um. I, I don't know. I've been struggling with how to word this, um, but some, you know, some departments, some groups, um. Uh. Get more than others do. And so this might be an opportunity for us to say, yes, this is a really critical thing. And it's kind of, uh. An underrepresented. Uh, group or, or, or need. And so therefore it has not got the visibility that it should get. It's, it's just an opportunity for us to. Surface something that we've always just is going by because there's other things that we think are just so much more pressing. And if there's just some way we could figure that out. I didn't say that very eloquently at all, but, you know, some, you know.
Yeah, I think, and I think.
Some departments have, you know, they have staff, they have, you know, they have the ability to get and build good case together. And therefore they, they're getting the time at town meeting and it's a budget and others don't. I think this is an opportunity for us to make sure that. It's a more rounded hearing.
Okay. Yeah, and I think. Are, are, do you think, are these, are these groups people that would self-identify? Or do you have specifically? Does the select board, members of the select board have particular ideas in mind? I mean, one of the questions I have is we put out a, it's a, it was a pretty simple request form and we're hoping that people. Engage with it and that people are surfacing their needs. If that's not happening, or if there are groups that we should be aware of.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that we're going out and searching for more.
Okay.
That's, that's not what I'm suggesting at all. Um, I'm just suggesting that sometimes there may be some little things that can make a big impact on a group. Uh, and, and that group may not normally be asking for things, but, but it, but it really fits within it. Um, and so it might be an opportunity for us to kind of spread. Spread stuff what might have been our, our operating budget across more groups.
Yes, and I think.
I was struggling with how to say it because I clearly didn't even figure out how to say it.
Well, no, it's a, it's a, it's something that I, I won't say I struggle with, but it's something I'm sensitive towards is. There are. You know, being involved in many budgeting processes. It goes back to my earlier comment. I don't want this to become, because. I'm sensitive to the fact that ultimately whether this is a grant or whether it's taxpayer dollars, this is, these are, this is Carlisle's grant. And I'm very sensitive to the fact in the budgeting process that the town ultimately approves and has say in how we spend our money. In this case, the select board has the approval. And I thi- think we can use that to our advantage and to the community's advantage. We don't want this to become a workaround. We don't want to fund things that couldn't get through the normal budgeting process, and this is just another way to circumvent it. But as you said, there are these opportunities that we might not fund in a normal budget cycle. But meet the criteria, the prioritization to say, no, let's do this now. Because it's, makes sense. It, it helps this group. It, it, it can be funded under ARPA. So there is a line there that, that, um. You know, I'm sensitive towards, but. I think, I think there are some opportunities.
So can we, can we draw this together? Uh, Scott, throw up the chart that has the requests you have, please. And I think, you know, I want to kind of build on, um, Nathan's.
I don't really want to, uh.
Well, no, but let's just, look, it's a piece of data. I mean, come on, it's, it's a piece of data of people who have put requests in, so.
I, I would really, really like not to get into the individual.
No, I'm not. Nathan, Nathan, please. I'm not, I'm not getting into the individuals. I'm just, let's do it as a Pareto chart, right?
David, let me give you a, a, a high-level breakout. So the largest requests are infrastructure related. So everything CPS is HVAC. Municipal facilities.
No, I don't, you know, Scott, I don't need, I don't need the primer. I, I understand that. Let me, let me use it as a different. I want to use it as a different point to build on Nathan's if I can. So. The point, the points that I want to make are the following, that to Nathan's point about underrepresented groups. There are on this list, regardless of what they're asking for, there are a couple of underrepresented groups that normally, you know, may not push through. A request, right? So in part, um, you know, what you said, Scott, like. You put out a request and some people responded. So. I, I, I think that's okay, right? You know, you're getting people who might otherwise not. The, the one comment I, I do want to make on that score is one I've raised earlier, which is. It's a, it's kind of a town government approach where there are actually organizations that submit. And I don't, didn't hear in this or any other thing for a while. Individuals who might have been adversely affected by. The pandemic who might have needs. And I remember we discussed it and talked about maybe. You know, reaching out to various community groups like COA or, uh, FRS to. Have that, but I don't see any individuals. Is there any? So before we get, leave that point. Are there any individual requests that you entertain? Or is there even a mechanism to do that?
We didn't receive any individual requests. Um, the mechanism was the, the request form. And it, you know, we tried to disseminate it within the town, on the website.
Okay, all right. Okay. So fair enough. So we've done a reach out. So now going back then, thank you for that. So. There are a few ones here where you can see that there are groups that typically don't come to us for requests and the requests are small. And to your point and to Nathan's point, you know, again, I'm not presupposing the outcome, but you know, you might satisfy those needs. You might just agree and satisfy those needs and, and that kind of, in a little bit of a way, if I understand where Nathan's coming. You know, levels of playing field, right? Lets those small groups that ordinarily wouldn't bubble up to the surface to get something that's helpful. Then the larger ones, and this is why I'm not, again, I'm not going into each one, but the larger ones, typically the infrastructural. Uh, requests are larger in dollars simply because infrastructure is like more expensive. And obviously the one big one is the school one. So I have two questions on that, Scott. One is. Can we partially fund if you decide like? Again, I'll use CPS, but if you decide that part of the project is worthy, but you don't want to soak up all the oxygen. Is there a mechanism to partially request and then how does that?
Yeah, my understanding is, so using the example of CPS and the Wilken, Wilkins HVAC, if. Say for example, I think the, they don't, they didn't have a, a final quote. I think in this it was, they put in six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If that was going to be a warrant article, obviously we're not, we wouldn't fund that entirely through ARPA, even if we wanted to, because that would consume.
Right.
But my understanding is you can, if, if, if that were going to be a warrant at town meeting, you could say, we're going to fund three hundred and fifty thousand dollars through. You know, residential property tax and three hundred thousand through grant. Um, you, you can do that.
Okay. And then the other question on that is. You mentioned revenue replacement is kind of a catch-all, but you know, if one goes into history, that HVAC request has been. Surfed many times, you know, many times when I was on school board and even probably before I was on school board about. Fixing the HVAC problem and it's not, it would be a stretch. I mean, again, I'm just asking this question, like it would be a stretch. To say because of, I, you, well, let me rephrase this. Because of the pandemic, you could make the argument that it's even more important than it used to. I guess, but that's not really a revenue replacement, right? That's, that's something else, isn't it?
No, um, again, revenue replacement is the category.
Yeah.
Name, but what they mean is you can, they want you to use the money to. Deliver government services to, to the town, whatever that may mean. So. Communities are using that funds to buy fire trucks, buy police cars, to do, um, infrastructure upgrades to HVAC systems. To do system maintenance. Um. So it's called revenue replacement, but really what they're saying is use it for anything you want within the scope of your government services.
Okay.
It could be, it doesn't have to be COVID related. It, it could be.
Okay. So that's really the difference, right? They've sort of backed off of tying into COVID.
But even in the COVID pro, the COVID projects, they had broadband access and, you know. Water treatment and septic, you know, I mean, there, there was.
I know, but I mean, you could make a thin, you know, you could make a cherry mander type argument that.
No, and I, I don't, I wouldn't.
You don't need to, is what you're saying. You don't have.
You don't need to, and that, that would be disingenuous. Um.
Right, no, right. I don't want to be, right, we're right. I don't want to be disingenuous. And so what I'm understanding is that. That gymnastics that we might've had to go through to say, well, you know. The, the HVAC repla- Wilkins HVAC was rejected twice, you know, before, but by the way, now it's really important because, you know, filtration and blah, blah, blah. We don't have to do that. We can just say, that's what we want to do. And then what you're further saying is. If you think it's a worthy project, you could say, and again, I'm not, just, just by example, you could say. We think it's worth fifty percent ARPA funding and if you want it town, you know. Fund the other fifty percent, something along those lines.
Yes. And again, there's, they don't have to be projects that were, you know, we have a long list of infrastructure projects. Um, that, you know, whether it be HVAC or water treatment or. That you could use these funds for and, you know, essentially. Advance some of those projects and it's okay to, it's perfectly acceptable to do that. Um, in the case of HVAC, I would. My, I guess the distinction I would make is I would say. Does this mitigate future pandemics? And is there something that should be done to augment the HVAC system to do that? And if, if.
Right, right.
Filter, then you could look at that, but no, it's. When I say the infrastructure project, in a, in a weird way, the infrastructure projects I would support are the ones that have been in the five-year plan. And have been vetted and have been prioritized.
And, and may, and may or may not have a pandemic, uh, um, tie-in, right?
That's right.
But, but the last point, just to make sure we're clear, if you decide not to fully fund. If you fully fund, you fully fund, but if you decide not to, you're, you're like laying a matching grant out for the town, right? To say if you want it, you need to come up with the other half.
Yes.
Or some number.
And the, the, the difference there is that at that point, the project wouldn't be at the discretion of the select board. It would be contingent on town approval.
Right. Select board would say, we agree with you, Scott, or ARPA committee that, you know, again, I'm using an example out of context, right, but. You know, six hundred thousand or five hundred. You know, 600,000 or 500,000 of. An HVAC project is worth the ARPA money and we endorse a warrant article for the other, you know, X. And then if town decides, no, sorry. We don't really want it even at the discounted price, then then it rolls back into the pot, right?
Right. As opposed to another example would be. We need a new water treatment system at town hall. It's $10,500. That one, the select board could just approve.
Right. And then you roll it. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So. I could, we roll back to the the next slide because I really would like to focus the select board. On this slide because this was the one we really came to talk about. And what we need for you to kind of weigh in on. Is if you agree that these are the criteria that the ARPA committee should be using when looking more closely at the. Projects that have come in. And I guess the other question is, we we put these not in order. Is there something that you think should, you know. Rise to the top and that we should be looking at more carefully or, you know, than some of these other criteria, for instance.
This is Nathan. I think this is a great list and I don't, I don't, you know, whatever priority, I think it's going to be depending on the list you have as to what that priority is.
Thank you. And I would.
I know, just one other cat bucket that I do want to address before we finish up tonight is the concept. We do have requests. For individual requests for premium pay. We previously. That's something that the last we spoke as committees. You had articulated for a variety of reasons that that's not something. We were looking at, and so. That's not a prioritization here. I mean, and some of that would fall under kind of operating expense, so. I just, I do want to say that now, just so that we're all on the same page.
Well, Scott, on that topic. My understanding from. The both the recommendations from town council. And in our own conversations was that. We did not think premium pay was a workable. Project or workable idea for town employees. For a variety of reasons, which I don't think we need to go into. Are you now saying that? Those that requests for premium pay. You're you're receiving some from non. From organizations that are not related to town hall, town services, or you're saying that potentially could be considered now?
No, I'm not. No, we don't. We don't have requests from non-town services. I just. And I'm not aware of any substantive changes in that category of. In the final rule that that would change.
Okay.
It's not something I've deep dived on, but. I did want to be explicit at that because that's not something we would. We would recommend at this point.
Yeah, okay. We do need to wrap this up. Well, ideally in another minute, that's quick, but.
And that's fine, by the way. I mean, we, again, we can start down this path and.
Yeah.
We're not, our plan is not to allocate one point, you know, nearly 1.6 million in the next. You know, 60 days.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what I'm hearing is that we're comfortable with these criteria and I'm not hearing anyone say. They need to be in a priority order. So unless some other member of the select board wants to make sort of a new comment. I think we can. Close at this point and just thank you again, Scott and Kate and John for your work on this. You've clearly really dug into this subject matter and are coming through with a with a. A good outline and and plan for going forward. What do you anticipate? Just in terms of timing, I know you laid that out, but. The. The ones that are sort of town meeting sensitive. Are you thinking you would be back to the select board? Sort of in another, well, would have to be pretty much in four weeks or less.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have to, I need to understand the timing of the, when the warrants close and understand what's in the warrants. So I think as a committee, we're going to want to prioritize discussion on those in the next. So my hope is. We'll probably meet next week and recap and then the subsequent meetings. We'll get into the real. Discussion of the various requests.
Yeah, because just what we had talked about tentatively, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but that. We're trying to close the. Warrant and do that by our. Our meeting on March 8th. Is that right, Tim?
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah. So if, you know, if you. Need to. Come back and talk to the select board. Sooner on anything specifically, or if we need to do kind of an extra meeting. You know, I think we we would do whatever we need to do to help make that happen.
Okay.
All right. Good.
So we'll we'll mark March 8th down as a. Kind of a key date.
Yeah.
For for at least. Again, I think it comes back to. What if anything, how do we want to handle some infrastructure and how does that relate to what MFC or or? Might be on a warrant for HVAC.
Yeah.
I think the other, I think most of the other requests off the top of my head are. Aren't as time sensitive in that respect.
Okay. Good. Well, thank you very much.
All right.
We're moving on.
So just can I get a motion to adjourn from ARPA?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Raise your hands. Yeah. All right, thank you all.
Scott, just one quick question. Are you doing the ARPA portal on Thursday or the? The CLA portal on Friday?
I don't know. I got with Thursday, I think it's.
Okay, well, I'll do the Friday one then.
Scott, would you just share with Tim that one slide that had the or send that link to?
Yeah.
Him to send around to the select board, so.
I'll do that, yeah, right now.
Yeah, thanks a lot. That's great.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks again to the ARPA committee. All right, we are now at the point where we're going to. Sort of review what the governance task force has submitted for town meeting warrants and. I know that Rebecca is with us. Thanks very much, Rebecca, for joining us tonight as the chair of the governance task force. And I see Vanessa Maroney is here as well. I don't know if. There's anyone else from your task force that you want to. Introduce or?
I don't think so. I think it's the two of us. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here and. We also have a, we have in our packet, the the sort of draft list you provided a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
But let me turn it over to you to introduce. The topic.
Yep. So we are working at, I think it's Vanessa's word, the breakneck speed to try and get this turned into. More substantive warrant articles. We've had, I think. So it was the 24th, I think. So we've had, I think, four meetings since then. We're meeting twice a week for about three hours each meeting. Yeah, so so we are. Yeah, putting a lot into it to try and try and get this completed. I might. Tag team with Vanessa a bit. I did, I was not at Monday's meeting and so she chaired that meeting or was that yesterday? Oh, my gosh. So so to the extent there are details from yesterday's meeting that we want to talk through, she can jump in and correct me or. Steer the conversation. So we have, so for the first, I guess. The first, second and third items on that warrant topic list is the. The town administrator article. A human resources person article, director article, and then the possibility of the town clerk. Oh goodness, hold on. You just made full screen and I need to be. One second. Okay. And then the town clerk to be appointed by the select board, which would require a special act. Those three items, we are still in, I would say, some significant discussions and that. While there is. You know, it's hard to kind of walk the line here in terms of there's. I think a consensus that these are priority items, but in terms of how to address them or if we should be addressing them as warrant articles, I think that's still open. For the members of the group. Item number four. I think we are in pretty strong consensus there. We have not taken any votes on these. So none of these are actually finalized decisions and, you know, that everyone has said, yes, absolutely. So I will say that caveat. But I think that for item number four regarding the personnel board. Change, I think that one we are, we do have some consensus that. The personnel board would become advisory and I think that that was actually in connection with the HR director. That there would be. So human resources functions that the personnel board currently has responsibility for would actually be. Handled by an HR director and then if that. Person needed some help and, you know, with some advice, they would be going to the personnel board.
Whoops, we just lost the list.
Oh, it looks scroll there. Yeah. Let's see, so. The change to the personnel board and what might, what might. And I think we don't know the name. I think that's the thing. So again, we're still in discussions about this, so. It might say personnel board, but there might be some other name for this once it comes out on the other side. Because there is a concept that we would like this body to. Develop a policy to guide volunteer appointments. So to create things like. If there is an opportunity for an appointment that there would be. Publication listed on the website. And then if there is like selection criteria. That should be used for choosing appointees that 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 would be part of this. Personnel board. Their new role. And I think, okay, so that's number four. Number five is the. The budget creation. That one is still under, has a lot of debate, I think, going on, so I don't know that we have a specific. Direction for that yet, but the kind of concept is that there is a. A belief that the current way that the budget is created in Carlisle is not. How it's done in other towns and or the majority of towns across the Commonwealth and so that. It makes it maybe a little bit more difficult. So to create this, so the change would make it so the budget would be. More in line with kind of current practices across the Commonwealth. We had this confirmation ratification of the position finance director. So this was. A point of confusion that I don't know that we have completely sorted out. So in the. In one of the bylaw, one of the bylaws, there is one reference to finance director. And we don't have, so in order to, and I'm trying to say this correctly, in order to actually have a finance department, that is something that we would need to adopt. From the state statutes as how Carlisle wants to function. So we didn't ever do that, that we have record of. And so finance director is probably. Not necessarily the appropriate title. So that was just digging through some of this, but if that. That's probably not a separate warrant article. That would probably just be a correction that we include in the. In the budget making warrant article. So those two would probably be combined. The new advisory committee for the information technology is widely, I think. Agreeable among the group. So I think that this one is probably a go. It will, we would ask that the new committee, you know, be responsible for. Looking at information technology needs. Coming up with programs that are. If there, I, we are at. So the next one is the IT director. So there is some disconnect here on whether or not. We would ask this committee to actually. Give, you know, do some research and give their own opinion on whether or not an IT director should be created position that is filled in. And then the, sorry, and so then what is the other? And then determine like what the. End of life period is for, you know, things that are. Technology that's in use, software that can be used across different departments or different. Groups townwide. If there's opportunity there that would help for efficiency sake, getting folks on the same platform. That would be the responsibility of that and the concept around that committee. The propose to change the town meeting structure from one to two times a year. I think there is. Some broad alignment on that, so I would expect that that goes forward along with the. Warrant book publication with more time prior to town meeting. I think we will not be including the electronic voting as that seems to have its own. Kind of motion right now. So it seemed like that would not necessarily need us to tell. That this be added. So I think nine and 11 are a go, but 10 is probably not. And nine and 11 would likely be one warrant article. And then the last one, the extension of the term for the town governance task force or. Create a successor committee that also seems to be widely thought to be important. I think there is, we think we're going to be mostly finished, if not all the way finished. By the March 7th date. We might have, after the March 7th date, we might have informal recommendations that we would. Add on. But that all of our warrant pieces would be suggested. The. Idea of the successor committee would be. Potentially to help with implementation. And so that's, I think, what what that was about. So. That's, I think, the best I have for the status for these and how they are kind of morphing into fruition.
I just had one quick. Update to that about pertaining to town meeting. The, let's see, number nine and 11. As of, so at Monday's meeting, it was discussed that these would actually be two separate warrant articles. Anyway, that was the the. The main consensus there was to keep them as two separate items.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Vanessa, that I missed?
I mean, I have, so I could give a couple of a little bit more. Tiny bit more detail on the ones where we actually have really good consensus as of Monday, you know. In terms of. Let's see, hang on, let me find, there was a couple. The big thing from Monday was that potentially the IT advisory committee would be tasked with. Examining the role of a potential IT director, which is what Rebecca just talked about. So that was kind of a new. A new slant as of Monday. Something for the. A little bit more detail on the town meetings per year. Is that, you know, going from one time per year to twice per year and that the details on that that I have, you know, it's very. Few, but on the second town meeting must be held in September, October or November. And that the select board must call the second meeting. So that the public and committees have a chance to submit articles. However. If no articles are presented, then the select board does not have to hold the meeting, something to that effect. And then related to that, but again, a separate warrant article is about the town meeting warrant book. And I believe we we thought that the existing bylaw would be modified to ensure that the publication of the final warrant book. Is completed with more time for review prior to town meeting or a special town meeting. Is completed with more time for review prior to town meeting or a special town meeting. And that it must be published at least fourteen days in advance of either an annual or special town meeting and. The other sort of addition or specification is that. One hard copy per household must be mailed to arrive. Within, you know, to allow for that two week review period. And. That, the other. Last item of like really good consensus. Is that related to the Carlisle, to the Governance Task Force. We talked about that the warrant article should state that the Select Board would report back to town meeting via. The annual report on the progress of the implementation. Of any recommendations that the task force has put forth. And that most likely this would be a recommendation, but that the task force will be. Making a recommendation to the Select Board that an implementation committee. Could be created to effectuate recommendations. But that's not something for the. For the warrant. And then the rest, as Rebecca said. Is under, you know, still under discussion, discussion. Not moving the electronic voting, because that was in our discussion on Monday, that that would be. Probably put into the description of the IT Advisory Committee for, you know, that. Would be something that they would be. Looking at as well, you know, in terms of continuing that type of technology. And I think that that is. It, and Rebecca, did you want to talk about timing at all about like, so our next, so we have our, our next meeting is this. Thursday, the tenth, another three hours, and then Monday, the fourteenth, Valentine's Day, another three hours. And I think that our, our goal is really, you know, by the fourteenth, at the, I think, at the very latest. To hand this off to Town Council. So that we can really crank on the report and meet that March seventh deadline. That's it.
Yeah, I'm sure there are lots of questions and comments. Kate, I see your hand up. Why don't you start? And I, I will just point out, we may have to. You know, continue this at a, at another meeting as well, because the. The cert, the firm that we, you know, are considering tonight for the Town Administrator Search. Is coming up at eight thirty-five, but we, I think we can borrow five minutes of that and. Continue for a few more minutes. Yeah, Kate.
Okay, I guess I, I have actually quite a few questions. One, of course, is some of these strike me as not needing to be. In the form of a bylaw, for instance, we have. And I'll give you just an example, and that's number two, to propose, to propose a general bylaw. To create a Human Resources Director appointed by the Select Board. The Select Board has already. This year, we thought we. Were going to hire a, an assistant. Town manager who would be the head of personnel. So I don't know if that maybe didn't fall, you know. Into your definition of what you were looking for, but I'm, I'm wondering if that needs to be a. A bylaw, or if we, you know, just say, yeah, we, we, we agree with you and we're, we're on it and we, we'd like to work on that. So that's kind of one. And the other. And I also, this, I was, the number four, the. When you talk about the current bylaw and the person reflecting the Personnel Board. Would be advisory in nature. I'm hoping you did use the most recent bylaw that we just passed last June, was it? It was a very short bylaw. And I believe that that partly was taken care of. Already in our Personnel Policies and Procedures. Book that went along with that bylaw, so. I'd be happy to, you know, offline, if you want to talk to me and be happy to talk about that. Yeah, so and as I said, a lot of these, to me, strike me as like really good, strong. Recommendations, and I think a lot of them, the, the Select Board, or some of them anyway, the Select Board would be really. To, you know, kind of embrace and just go ahead with, without having a bylaw. So I'm just. Wondering how many bylaws we really need. I'll stop right there.
Yeah, briefly, just to clarify, I think, you know, the idea of having the HR Director position. We would use, and I think that, I think we've been using the right personnel by law. But we would basically use the description that's there. And it would be under the responsibility of the HR Director. I think this is how we have talked about it. And the HR Director. Could be a point, the. It's, it's a position, it's not a person, right? So then. The Town Administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator could be appointed as the HR Director.
So we, the way it is currently, the town, the admin, Town Administrator is the HR Director. Or he can, he or she can. Deputize somebody.
Other comments while we have just a few minutes left. Nathan or Luke or David?
Yeah, I don't either.
I just have a process question. So when. When you're going to continue your deliberations. It's going to result in motions that go directly to the warrant book then from this point?
So I think that what we plan on doing is getting advice from Town Council as well. I mean, we have pretty. Clear, you know, our, our goal is to give them a very clear bulleted list to work from and then. Get feedback from them about what makes the most sense and then go forward from there.
But I mean, we're, we're sort of done with advice at this point, are we, as a Select Board? Or do you, are you seeking advice or you're just presenting where you are?
I think we're presenting where we are.
Good.
Okay.
And, yeah, I, I know that's a great idea to get Town Council involved. I think that's really. A good next step.
He actually attended our last Thursday meeting. We had him answer questions. And provide some insight on a couple of things, so. And he actually has provided us kind of a, a draft sample, a sample of the Town Administrator bylaw. That we are looking at to try and, because it was close to what we were looking for, I think.
Yeah, the, the, the other thing, we, we do have to sort of figure out a little bit too is. Making sure that that. The sooner that is available, the better, so that in this Town Administrator Search that we do need to engage. As soon as possible, we, you know, that, we have that as part of the. You know, what we're looking for.
Yep.
So I think we may need to do some, you know, coordination before you may be totally ready for something to go to town meeting. But I can, I can follow up with you Rebecca on that.
So that, but that leads to another question, which is. So we're not advising the task force on the motions or the, yeah, the warrant articles, but. Is everything a warrant article or is there simply? Recommendations that come out of the task force that just are recommendations? Like that one.
Yes, that's, I think, what they're figuring out with Town Council. Which are the things that need to go to town meeting? And. Am I, am I, am I understanding that correctly, Rebecca and Vanessa, or are you thinking all of your? Recommendations, whether or not they require a bylaw change would be going to town meeting?
No, so we wanted, so this list was provided because we were asked to give top, like our kind of placeholders. By that January twenty-fifth date. And so this list is like. It's like everything that we were talking about. And then it was narrowing this down on this list to figure out what it is that we need to propose as a bylaw versus what we can make recommendations for. The, the report itself, I think, will have. Recommend, a recommendation section that will be separate for, and this is, again, we haven't kind of finalized this, so I'm a little speaking ahead of the game here. But, but that it will have in addition to the explanations around the warrant articles. And our processes and how we, what we've done to get here, our methodologies. It will have our general recommendations that will be. Kind of non-binding, not looking for a vote on them, just what we came up with and suggest that folks would entertain.
Well, you say, Meredith, you say folks, but, so it's pretty clear if you, you and council or whatever determine that. A warrant article is merited, then it's a warrant article that goes to town and it gets voted.
Yes.
Recommendation, is it to the Select Board to decide whether or not to take up such recommendation?
It will be, depending on what the recommendation is, right? I mean, so if it is a recommendation to the Select Board that's within the Select Board authority, yes. But if it's, if the IT Committee is created via the bylaw and the recommendation is to the IT Committee. If it's not Select Board appointed, so that's all still out there. So, but it would be to the, to whichever. If it's not under Select Board umbrella, it would be to the particular group that it would apply to.
So. But as you say, all of those are non, unless they're voted on a town meeting, they're simply non-binding recommendations. And so my last question then is, is more specific and it's on number. Where's the budget one?
Five.
Five, is it five? Yeah, so what, I mean, I, I'm just curious. To me, the budget responsibility is for FinCom and then to the Select Board. Neither of those two, they, they support it, but they don't have. Responsibility. So are you suggesting taking it away from FinCom and Select Board?
It's about the creation. And so my understanding is, and this is not my area of expertise or, and I am not the leader on this particular issue. So it is my understanding that the department head, like the way that Carlisle currently does it is kind of. Yeah, that FinCom and Town Administrator top down kind of create the budget. But that this would be more of a bottom up, that the departments would propose their budgets and that negotiation would happen that way.
But don't, I guess I'm confused, like that, I mean. That kind of is what happens, right? The departments present their requests and then it's the responsibility of. The Finance Committee to vet them and then ultimately the Select Board to sort of adjust them. So I don't, I don't understand.
I think I can speak to that a little bit, David, which is basically if you look at it from easing of administrative stresses. It, it's, we believe that what we're currently talking about. Would definitely put us more in line with what's most common across the Commonwealth, where the budgets are initially created. Jointly with a Town Administrator and a Finance Director or Treasurer, what, you know, whoever actually holds that position. And that way that the individual departments work. With those two people or those departments and it can be out of public. You know, it doesn't have to be in an open meeting, all of this stuff, like it can happen fluidly and quickly. And then can be brought to FinCom for more advising and working and fleshing things out. So really to be, because right now, it, it's a long process, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're not, you're not seeking our input, but I'm gonna provide it anyway, which is. First of all, well, I just want to finish the point, please. Clarity.
David, you've got one minute, because we really do, and we, it's not that this is the end of the conversation.
No, I know, but it's just. So one is clarity, be clear on what you're asking and two. Distinguish between the process of developing the mechanics of the budget. And the approval authority, which is to me pretty clear. You know, FinCom and Select Board, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and thank you Rebecca and Vanessa. I know that you all have really been putting in the time, you and the rest of the committee, so. I'm, I'm sure you're feeling like, okay, this is, we're, we're on the home stretch, but we really gotta finish up here and. But let's make sure that we're staying in touch about things that A, need to be on the. Town meeting warrant, but also other aspects of this that are impacting what we're. In the midst of deciding or setting into motion right now.
Yeah, and I, I do think that we are really aware of that and how much it impacts all the work that you're doing. And I think as soon as we have. You know, a gelled voted. You know, thing, we are going to absolutely be in communication because we know how this impacts your work.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody.
All right. Bye bye. So let's, if we could take this off the screen now, thank you. And. I'd like to welcome the members that are here, the individuals from the Community Paradigm. Organization. And let's see, who do we have with us? Bernard Lynch, I see you there, hi. Arnold, the Chair of the Select Board. And do you have other members of your firm with us?
We have John Petron. Who's down here at right at the center, center of my screen and Sharon Flaherty, also with Community Paradigm.
Hi, hi, thank you for joining us. And so our Select Board, I'll just quickly, members, if you raise your hand, so Kate Reed is on the Select Board. And Luke Asklilo. Ooh, and we have Nathan now in person. And then David Modell, who, yeah, there's David. So, all right, well, thank you for joining us. And I, I know that you have a, a presentation to make and you provided us with. Lots of information that we have all seen in our packets as well. Tim, did you wanna, do you want to say anything first?
Just by way of introduction, Community Paradigm was one of two firms that submitted a proposal. To the Board a number of weeks ago. In inviting them here tonight, I explained that the Board had decided to embark upon. A course of proceeding with the full-time recruitment and the interim recruitment at the same time. And is looking to install an interim for a period of a few months, three to six months, or however long it takes to recruit. A full-time replacement. I think initially we were talking about a longer term for an interim and that was. Kind of causing a little bit of confusion. And we're, we're back on, on track to do more or less the traditional. Recruitment where the search firm will fire, find an interim to, to fill the gap. That, you know, will exist before a full-time. Manager can be hired. And I just want to say, I've known Bernie and, and John for many, many years. They're, they're municipal managers, former municipal managers in Massachusetts with many years of experience and. You know, I, I have the utmost confidence that, that you'll like the approach that they have and. They'll be able to tell you about their experience. I think that they probably do eighty percent of the recruitments in, in Massachusetts currently, so they're. Very well experienced, very well regarded and, you know, I, I'll let them give their presentation and get out of the way.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, I'll just, I'll just quickly go through the, a little bit about us and then. A little bit about our, our approach and then hopefully have a, a bit of a dialogue with you regarding. What you're looking for and how we can best mesh our experience and expertise, if you will. With, with what you want and need for Carlisle, so that we get the best town administrator for you. It's, as Tim indicated, my, my background's in municipal government. Established Community Paradigm back in two thousand fourteen. I used to be the Town Manager of your neighboring community of Chelmsford. I was the first Town Manager there and was there for roughly twenty years before I decided to hit the big city. And went over to the City of Lowell, where I served as City Manager for off-state years. And in two thousand fourteen, as I say, I, I decided to leave there and, and take on some other challenges and some other opportunities. And one of them was starting Community Paradigm. And. John is, John's background is, is similar to mine in terms of municipal management. He was the, most recently, the Town Administrator for the Town of Burlington. But also served in similar positions in Ashland, Harvard, Pepperell. For a period of time, he was in the school, he was the Assistant School Superintendent for the City of Marlborough. And Sharon's background is in Journalism and Communications. And so we, we, we're the three. Main people that will be working on this recruitment if we, if you choose to work with us. And, and then we have some other people that would also be participating in this as well. Community Paradigm, as Tim said, we, we have. Um Community Paradigm, as Tim said, we we have uh, we have established a pretty good reputation for ourselves, I guess, I I'm happy to say. Uh we've now completed or, to tell you the truth, I I won't say that we've uh with the exact number. We've been uh either completed or in the process of completing uh roughly eighty um town administrator and town manager positions over the last six years. Uh we've become the most uh active recruiting firm uh in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I and I like to think that it's a as a result of the experience we bring, the knowledge we bring of municipal government uh and uh our our network of people that we know in the business that uh we've known or we've developed relationships with over the last uh, you know, number of years in the municipal world. Uh but particularly in the most recent uh past, uh as we're, as we've been working on these recruitments, we've grown to know many of the new people uh in municipal government that are uh taking these positions. Uh it's been an interesting period in municipal government is, uh I think uh John and I go through these numbers from time to time. I think we're up out of the two hundred and sixty town administrative town manager positions in the Commonwealth. I think we must be up over two hundred now that have turned over in the last uh five years, four or five years. Uh it's a staggering number uh as all of the baby boomers uh retire and uh go on and do other things. Uh so um so it's it's made for uh, you know, and I think the other part of it that I think I I like to think that we uh has made us uh uh successful in working with communities is our approach is one of willingness to work with you. Uh we want this to be a process that you uh you feel comfortable with. This is a big decision. Uh Tim has been there now for a number of years. Uh you know, Carlisle isn't the Carlisle that uh uh that Tim started in uh as town administrator. Uh what's the band, what about ten years ago, Tim, or thereabouts?
Yeah, twelve and a half, but.
Twelve and a half, yes. So uh but it's um, you know, so the needs have changed, your expectations have changed. I just heard your uh Government Study Committee making their uh recommendations and ideas. Uh what you need, what you want is is certainly different. Um and we want to have a process that reflects bringing you candidates that you want to see. So um as part of that, uh you know, I I guess step number one, as I understand it, is you need to find an interim. We do not choose an interim for you, I want to make that very clear. If you were to hire us, we do not walk in there on April first or April fifteenth or whatever the date you need and say, here's your interim. What we will do is we will uh reach out uh and try to find you interim candidates that we will bring to the board and say, this is what we have, these are the people that are expressed interest in, uh you would interview and you would choose. Um in the meantime, uh we would also uh spend time, uh you know, again, I was right next door in Carlisle. Uh excuse me, in Chelmsford, I'd like to think I know Carlisle, but clearly I don't know Carlisle as well as you do. We want to hear from the stakeholders of Carlisle as to what you're looking for at town administrator. Clearly, that includes the board, uh that includes the department heads, uh and in all likelihood includes uh other members of the community. Uh so we would work with you to gather that information with the goal being, and I think we gave it to you in the proposal. Uh we develop a position statement. I think it's a great process to go through just to think about what you're looking for from a town administrator uh and what the needs are. But we use it as a recruiting brochure to uh help people understand what Carlisle is all about, what you're look, what you're looking for, what strengths are necessary, what the ideal candidate looks like. Um I think I gave you um flipping through the proposal here, I think you gave you Westport as uh an example. But you know, certainly we have a number of them that are on our webpage and we can always get you more. Uh but we develop that that position statement uh, as I say, to re- to help us recruit and uh and then ultimately helps the screening committee and the board uh and us uh assess candidates to decide who who meets your your needs. Um so so with the, in terms of recruiting, um you know, obviously we advertise, we post the position. We do that passive recruitment process that uh everybody does. But I think what's a little bit different about the way we do it, uh and I think the way we go about that whole position profile is a little bit different than other firms as well. But in terms of the recruiting, uh we use a very active recruitment process. Again, we know candidates all over the state uh and beyond uh that might be interested in this position. They may be town administrators now, they may be assistants, they may be department heads that are particularly uh good department head somewhere that might be the right fit for Carlisle. Uh both John and I, uh John, in fact, is the program coordinator for the uh Mass Municipal Suffolk University Local Government Certificate Program that has put us into touch with literally hundreds of new people over the that have gone into that program over the last ten years that are interested in becoming municipal administrators. Uh we we have access to all of those people. Uh with the searches, those eighty searches we've done, uh we know people that are out there that are looking to become town administrators. Uh you know, on a regular basis, the three of us uh are contacted by people uh that are interested in uh becoming a municipal administrators, they reach out to us uh to pick our brain and to put out themselves on our radar. So we we literally have hundreds of people in our database that we would look at and try to spread the word about Carlisle. In terms of the next steps in the process, once we get all those resumes, uh it's our anticipation that you would have a screening committee that we would sit down with, review all those resumes, uh and we would help select the uh candidates that should be uh interviewed. But ultimately, it's up to the screening committee. Um we would help them through the interview process uh of those candidates, uh help them pick the uh finalists, that we would then do the necessary background checks uh and uh reference checks uh and then bring those finalists to the board and uh, you know, he- help the board through the process as well uh before you ultimately end up with your selection. That's the process in a nutshell. Again, big part of it to us is stakeholder engagement, you know, customizing to what you need uh within reason. Uh and uh but you know, we 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 pretty much, I don't think we've ever said no to a board or a community as to what they're looking for uh in terms of what we can do. Um we just want you to get the right candidate, so um. So that's it in a nutshell, uh I'm happy to take questions and obviously John and Sharon are here as well to do the same.
Well, thank you. And you're you're uh the information packet that you provided also, I thought was very helpful.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions just to start us off. So I I was in the packet and this may be because you were at that time thinking we were going to have an interim first and then uh look for a a permanent, but in the packet, the timeline you laid out sort of showed fifteen weeks for the interim administrator search and then uh and after that, another fifteen weeks for the town administrator. So I know when you're, when you were just speaking now, you were saying that that would happen concurrently. So when you, when you put together the the um uh what did you, how did you describe it, the the town uh picture of the town that you you know, that you have in your packet, you have a sample for us?
Good.
Are you, would you anticipate that we would do that process fairly soon? Uh i- it, do you, do you need to have that for the interim? Or are you thinking that's really primarily geared to the final, you know, for looking for that permanent town administrator? And how would you see the timing of that working, given um that we're now talking about doing this concurrently?
Yeah, the the, great question. Uh I I did, based upon your um, the the scope that you had outlined in your request for proposals, uh it it sort of delineated two steps. Bring in an interim and I believe it even spoke to the um uh the necessity or the uh interest in doing some type of profile. So i- i- if we're doing this more as a traditional, the way we've done it with a number of other communities, uh it would be, we would, if you were to engage with us, uh we would immediately start working with you to identify a date by which you want to uh interview some um interim candidates. And um we would begin the process of uh working on that profile, not for the interim, but for the permanent position. Uh so the entire timeline, I think we we would probably be looking at somewhere in a, you know, roughly fifteen week. That's that's our standard. We've done it as short, we've done it in a shorter period of time, uh but uh fifteen is a comfortable point. Uh it can even maybe go a just a couple of weeks beyond that, but you you're looking at um you know, roughly fifteen, sixteen weeks to to do all of that.
Okay.
I should note, I should note, uh I know you'll be excited with this, is uh, you know, with the change in the uh scope to only do one position profile, not to do essentially two. Now clearly, you know, if we, once we do one, uh the thought with the proposal I gave you was we do one and then come back and modify it to reflect the permanent and any changes that you might have identified. Just doing one profile and going through that, you know, we can reduce our fee by uh twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
Um and then I I uh also was in reading that uh your proposal. Um I was very interested in in the um sort of number three bullet pointer, I I don't have it right in front of me, I've forgotten how you laid it out, but yet I think sort of four key things that you um tried to provide and one was the active engagement of stakeholders. Um and I I jotted down some notes that this included uh community forums as well as you know, the what you mentioned in your pre- in your oral presentation just now, which is top and select board members and town officials and the department heads. Um d- d- tell me just briefly, because I know other people will have things they want to ask about. Um h- how does that work? Just give me a sort of a quick thumbnail sketch of of what you mean by a community forum.
Well, obviously it's changed in uh over the last two years. Uh.
Yeah.
Uh more than likely, we would do something, what what we, I'll tell you what we used to do. Uh we used to um come out to the community, uh go to a room uh and we would run a forum. We would facilitate a discussion with uh residents and uh other stakeholders that might be interested in in coming. Uh so that's how we we used to do it. Um in the age of COVID, uh we have moved to a little bit different. Uh we have moved to a uh doing it via Zoom in some communities. Uh and in other communities, uh what we've done is we've developed a i- interestingly, we, well, we've gone to Zoom, uh in some cases, we get a little bit better participation via Zoom than we used to get through the community, the in-person community forums. But we also have found it to be very helpful to do a community survey. We link it up on your webpage and uh we get feedback from residents uh and employees that feed into the survey and tell us what the issues are and what the attributes are that they're looking for. And I will tell you that we get a much better response from that than we ever did from a community forum. We, you know, the town of Grafton comes to mind. Uh I I could, I could give you another one and I will, but the town of Grafton comes to mind. I think we got almost a hundred people participating in the community forum. Uh and you know, a town like Grafton, uh in the past, if we did a a community forum, we might get ten, twelve people there. Uh we did a for, we did a forum in Watertown uh recently and obviously a larger community, uh different type of community. I think we had six people show up at the for, we actually did an in-person one there. Uh we had six people show up, uh I think, and we had eighty-five people on a Zoom call. But the for, the community survey had, I want to say almost four hundred people participated. So it was very, very helpful information to receive that guides us in the profile, but also guides us in us and the screening committee in the development of the questions that will be asked of the candidates.
Others on the board have have comments or questions?
Um I I I don't have any questions, um really, I guess it's, I think the proposal is great. Um I just also just want to thank you for your transparency and just acknowledge the twenty-five hundred dollars that you did not have to cut off because of the change. I do want to acknowledge that and and thank you for that.
I just have one question and I also echo, it's a very nice proposal, we're along the lines of what we're thinking. So um Bernard, what Bernie, what um? And by the way, I checked in, I'm a Chelmsford business owner and uh checked in with Paul Cohen and he had great things to say about you.
Oh, great, thank you.
You know, he's a good friend of mine now and um uh so my question is really.
Interesting tidbit, he replaced John Petron in Harvard and he replaced me in Chelmsford, so.
Huh, and another tidbit, and Tim can chime in if this is accurate, that he was Tim's first boss, is that right, Tim? I mean, you were his.
He was once town administrator in Carlisle as well, so.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Small world, anyway. Um so my question, Bernie, is um back to the interim, like the profile of an interim, like who is that and where do you go get that? Because it sounds like it'll be a short-term thing, but it's kind of not totally clear the duration of that short term because of other factors, so just give us me a little bit more flavor of that.
Yeah, I'll tell you the tradition, I'll I'll give you the traditional uh uh interims are retired managers. I I said all the baby boomers are retiring, but that doesn't mean they stopped working. Uh the they um, uh the more traditional um interims that we've seen out there are retired managers that are interested in coming in, keeping their hand in it. Uh and you know, they can stay for about six months, working full-time, I think it is. And they can last a little bit longer if you're willing to reduce the number of hours per week. Uh there are also, the other option is um uh managers that are in transition that uh for one reason or another have left their other employment as a manager or as an administrator. Uh and uh, you know, are are available for uh to be brought in.
And in the, in that latter case, then are they looking also to maybe put their hat in the ring for the regular position or uh not necessarily?
I- 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 in some cases, yes.
Okay, right. But you have, I mean, again, from a timing standpoint, while you're, I I appreciate the uh comment that you run the process in parallel. But you could, I mean, you could get enough information about the, it's not like, you know, again, it's not the permanent position, so you feel like you could find somebody to plug in while you're finishing the rest of the process, right? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, we we just did a um uh a similar um thing in Wayland. Uh we helped them find it, all we did there was we helped them find an interim. Uh but we were able to uh reach out, uh post the position in a few locations and and more importantly, reach out to people we knew and we brought them four candidates for them to consider for interim and they made their choice. And so.
Okay.
And how long did that process take?
Oh, I think uh, I think that whole pro- the the process of finding the candidates, I think, took a little over two weeks.
Oh, wow, okay.
I I'd have to go back and check my calendar. But yeah, it was, it was, it was pretty, it was a pretty quick turnaround. Um you know, we we reached out, got names, brought the resumes in, handed them off to the board, they did an interview, they made this election and that's it.
So um that leads to another question, Bernie, because you you have a lot of experience and you know, Tim has indicated a preference to leave more or less around the time of town meeting, sort of April, end of April timeframe. What, in your opinion, what's a good amount of overlap between, say, Tim and the interim? And then the interim and the permanent?
Uh I would say um bluntly, I would say uh just a couple of days on each one. Really, right? Yeah.
Okay.
You know, you can, you can go, you could go a little bit more than that, but um I wouldn't, this i- i- it gets a little awkward having two administrators. Uh and in fact, the other, the other issue that comes up uh is when you have an interim, and this is something that actually happened in Wayland, when you. and this is something that actually happened in Wayland, when you have the interim coming in, and the current, the permanent person is still there. They don't have the authority of the administrator, so they are, they go a couple of days in a special employee type of status, and then they move over to be the administrator. So legally, you can only have one town administrator. So.
Right, thank you.
Kate or Luke?
No, I, I don't really have anything to add, except, you know, would either of you be interested in? But no, just, you know, very well-written proposal. And yeah, no, I, I just, you know.
Thank you. Let me, I, I'll send John. John can do it for.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't give a long enough time for them to answer when you asked that question.
They could tell by the look on their faces, yeah. That, I, I get that eye roll a lot when I ask questions. I don't.
We, we've each been an interim once.
And that was enough, huh? Kate?
I don't have any questions either. I, I do want to echo the comments that I was very pleased with the proposal and feel comfortable going forward.
We've got a few minutes here. I'm just looking at what time we're supposed to, oh, actually, no, we're pretty much on our, on our agenda, we're pretty much timed to end. But just one quick thing from me, it's about the, our own sort of search committee that would be working with you. What do you, what do you recommend in terms of the, the kinds of people that should be on that?
I, well, first I'd say keep it at a number between five and seven. Because scheduling is always the most challenging part of doing this. So you want to have it be an amount that's reasonable to schedule. And in addition to that, beyond just the ease of that, I, I think having too many voices in the room can, can get a bit confusing. So I think better to have five to seven. I think having, I'm not sure what the board's thoughts are on being involved with the committee, having a membership, having member, one member, two members on the committee. Some do, most probably don't. But I would say having, you know, it's nice to have representation from the finance committee, representation from the, perhaps from the school community. You know, what the, whatever the pressing issues are facing, you know, it might be helpful. I'll just throw it out as a possibility, but obviously you'd have a better handle on this, someone from the government study committee. Clearly, there are people that have been looking at the organization and may have some thoughts. You know, John, Sharon, any other ideas that you want to put in there?
A good balance of people with different backgrounds, you know, so having that balance coming in. And also people understanding that they're picking three or maybe four, but, you know, the final candidates for the board to, to make the final decision. So people need to realize that they are not choosing the town administrator. They're trying to put together the best pool to send to the board for final review. So if people can understand that process, that goes over a lot, you know, a lot better than trying to say, oh, we gotta, you know, and, and they don't rate them as well. So, you know, you also understand, you know, we'll work with the screening committee so that they don't rate people. And then people who understand the confidentiality of the committee. You know, that they can't be talking about, you know, any other candidate outside of the final three. So you need people who can maintain that level of confidentiality. Because the only people who will ever know beyond, you know, the three finalists will be those members of the screening committee going in. But yeah, having that good balance of people, you know, who have, you know, a, a group that gets along so well, makes life easier all around, you know, and, and gets through the process very quickly. The other thing is, we can work with you as sort of a timeframe of when this is going to occur, and then make sure people are around. So if we're looking at doing this in the month of May, and someone's gone for the whole month of May, you know, then they, you know, it's not a good choice. So just making sure people are available during that process.
Thanks. Sharon, anything from you?
No, that's, I agree with those points. I was going to stress availability because sometimes you get people who are involved in so many other committees that they, they haven't, there are no nights that they're available all to the entire committee. And the other point being that they recognize that they're a screening committee, not the search committee. So that's crucial, because you do see that occasionally where the committee is trying to pull an end run around the board, per se.
Yeah, we have, we have actually encountered that where they, where the, the committee actually al- almost tries to undermine the board. And usurps the selection process.
So people you trust. And also, just, just remember that you're going into your town meeting season. So make sure that, you know, the people you have here have that capability of balancing, especially if they're like finance committee, you know, this is their busy time of year. So, you know, so just make sure that balance is, you know, they, they understand it as well.
Any other comments from any other board members, select board members? My sense is, am I correct? Other board members in that were all very encouraged by what we've, what we've seen and read and heard and that we would be interested in hiring your firm, Bernard, to help us with these two searches. Am I correct, select board members?
I mean, I was going to mention, I think I agree, and do we need a motion then to formalize that and not wait two weeks?
I'm going to make a motion.
Do we have to waive a practice of waiting, or can we just move forward?
No, I think we can move forward. The motion has been made. Is there a second?
I didn't hear him actually make it. I think.
You want to make a motion that we hire?
I would like to, I, I move that we accept the proposal from Community Paradigm Associates stated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and execute in agreement to recruit a now a town council, a town administrator.
An interim town administrator and a permanent town administrator.
Yeah, okay. Interim and permanent town administrators.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let's do this by roll call. Arnold, I.
Uskalalai.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Pete, I.
Excellent. It's unanimous then. Thank you very much. We, we're looking forward to working with you.
Looking, looking forward to working with you. What I'll do is I'll put together a letter of engagement, a standard letter of engagement, which uses the proposal as a, as an exhibit. You know, we'll, we'll make the necessary modifications regarding the fee. And we will get that off to you. And, and then John will probably be the, the day-to-day lead that will be out there. But we will, we'll need a contact. Should we be working, we'll work, work through Tim for the time being. And then go from there. Great.
That, that means he can't leave until you find somebody. That's. One quick question, Tim, you know, who, who is the, who's the signatory on, on our side on this agreement they're going to put together?
It, it would be me because it's a contract under fifty thousand.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that they put the right, the right name on it.
I appreciate that. I, I, I've had to do that to the different communities, back and forth with different, with different names. So thank you.
Well, great. Wonderful to meet all three of you, and we're looking forward to working with you. And I know it's going to be a good process.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Al.
Good night.
All right, well, I, I know that Allison is on the call. I have seen her name. And Allison, I appreciate your patience and sorry to keep you waiting a little bit. We got a little bit behind earlier on and didn't quite catch up. So anyway, thank you for joining us, and Allison's here to update us on the Friends of Center Park and some of what they are planning. And also to, we have a couple of requests from them that we will need to take a vote on as well.
Away for thirty seconds. I'm going to go off video. Just have to run, get a power cord. I'll be right back. Don't wait for me.
All right. So Allison, thank you.
I'm going to be wearing, first of all, my Friends of Center Park hat. I have two hats this evening. And with that, I'd like to brag about what we have done at Center Park. We have created garden classes for the community to keep them looking good. We work with Gary Davis and his crew who do all the mowing and snow removal. And he brings us wood chips when we ask for them. He's a wonderful guy. We love him. And we've been encouraging community events there. So we have done it with, as much as we can, with volunteers. And we try to be very frugal. It's got really hard during COVID to do any fundraising, but we've even started to do a little fundraising. So one thing I'd like to ask the select board is if they could, if you, one of you could be our liaison so that we can invite you to our really exciting board meetings where we, we meet for about an hour, usually at Center Park in the warmer days, and meet at the park. And seriously, we have a little wine and we talk about stuff and get things accomplished in a very friendly, easygoing manner. So we need a liaison, it's one thing. I'd like a vote for, for you. Gary asked for this. One of the events we'd like to have for a visitor at Center Park is to come during May and see signs around on the lawn that say, "No mow May." And that is something that was started in, in the UK. And when I heard about it, I knew what it meant immediately, because anyone who mows grass in this area knows that you usually start mid-May to start mowing your lawn. And all it asks is for people to delay doing it for a couple of weeks till June. And it allows some of the clover to grow, some of the weeds, things that are not grass that are in your lawn. But it's terrific for pollinators, and it makes the insects hang around your lawn. And the birds that are creating their nests and feeding their babies come and eat a lot of the bugs there. And it's such a minor thing to ask people to delay just for a couple of weeks their mowing regime. And yet it has a very big impact for the, for the, the bugs and the birds and the. Anyway, so what we would do is we would have the DPW mow around the edges of Center Park. We would probably mow to the benches where the visitors want to go and sit down. So it's not totally on mow. That would just look like the DPW weren't doing their, their job. And that, that's why I think they, they want to put signs up. We'll do the signs. We want people to learn from it. So I, I would like it to be done in other places in Carlisle, but I'm only involved with Center Park. So I'm only going to ask for the no mow May approval. But it is something that is good for Carlisle, and I hope you can consider doing it for the common and other places where otherwise you might start mowing early. So that was one thing. Another thing I'm going to ask is one of the main problems that we have in our mission to try and encourage the use of Center Park is people say, what, you mean that parking lot overflow for ferns? You know, they just don't realize that beyond the parking lot is a cute little park. So we're doing all the things we can to drag people to have picnics and then, and see what's going on. It's not private land. It is public land. We've, you know, we did a Halloween spooky trail. We've done activities. And having a no sign at all, that, I mean, I guess there is a sign technically. There's one about this big on one of the, two of the posts on one of the entrance ways. But nobody knows that it's Center Park. We don't have no signage. And we know that you have to go through the historical commission to get any signs approved. But one of our board members, Dana Booth, is working to get permission from the historical commission and permission from our board, because we haven't even got the details of what the sign would look like. But what I imagine is something along the lines of what is in front of the police station. You know, a wooden sign with gold letters, something like that. And it would be in the front island of the parking lot where there's a big oak tree and an island of, of perennials, somewhere there so that somebody driving past could see that it's Center Park. So it's just a conceptual thing. I'd like you to approve if you think that, you know, a sign that says Center Park. It might say Carlisle Center Park. When you have committees work on these things, you have to talk, talk about that for a few hours. But basically, a, a nice wooden sign is what we're asking for. And another thing I'd like to talk about is we've only been in charge or been involved with Center Park for the last three years, but it is the fifteenth anniversary. And they traditionally celebrate that on Old Home Day. So I'd like somebody from this select board to give a speech or something exciting to give us some hoopla for the anniversary of Old Home Day. And then my last comment is that one of the things that can invite somebody to use Center Park without having to put a neon sign that says, "Enter here," or anything dramatic, is just to have benches, benches to draw people in. I mean, if you see a bench, it looks like you could go walk over and sit there. So we would like to get not any more of those big granite benches. We have enough of those. And they're wonderful, and I'm not complaining about them, but it's more comfortable to sit on a wooden bench. And I'd like to encourage artisans locally to create really cool-looking wooden benches. And so we're going to do some fundraising if we can and not have them be something that the historical commission has to approve because it's not a permanent installation. It's just a bench. But we, that's one of the areas of improvement for Center Park. When we inherited the job of maintaining Center Park back in April of two thousand nineteen, I presented to the select board that we would create a task force and then a nonprofit to do this. We've done that. We, we became a certified, not five oh one C three corporation. I'm the president. I'm also the horticultural director, because I get to play with plants there. It's a fun place. One of the things we did is the park was a lawn with beautiful garden beds around it. And what we've done is created a whole new series of pathways around the edges, taking it right to the beautiful stone walls. So we've expanded the garden and the use of the park by, you know, creating areas that are safe and pretty in the back corners. So that's it. I'm going to start bragging. Now I'm going to listen.
Well, maybe we should just take some general comments. And I, I know you have five specific things you've mentioned, and we, we may come back to a couple of these at another point. But any general comments? And Nathan, I will just mention that while you were getting your power cord, that the first thing on Allison's list was to have a liaison from the select board.
I'm sorry, I was, I was here for her entire thing. I just forgot to put my video back on, but thank you.
Good, good.
So I, I, so if I go through, so, so there were some things that you, so you said there were five things on your list. Wait, am I off mute? Yeah. There were, there were five things on your list. It seemed like to me like two of those really had to do with, look kind of like what was going on in the park. One, one being that you'd like to do a sign, one be that you'd like to a bench. Are there, you know, can you tell us a little bit more about other things that you have envisioned for the park? And any other changes or anything like that that you have envisioned for the park over the next year?
Well, just, I should probably explain that I'm wearing several hats today. This is my Master Gardener hat now. If you're familiar what a Master Gardener is, a Massachusetts Master Gardener is someone who's been trained and given a certification to go around and volunteer at places. You're not allowed to be paid and you volunteer at botanical gardens and things. So I have, with my Master Gardener buddies, created a series of, it's called outreach. That means gardening classes for the community, that's done with the Council on Aging and the Carlisle Rec Commission. And so every Monday, if you wanted to swing by, you could see a bunch of people poking around, digging and planting and snipping and doing all the things to keep things looking cool. And it's organized and taught by the Master Gardeners of Massachusetts. And then we do that for April, May and June. And then in July to October, we have a more casual, just, it's called gardening versus outreach. It means just people can meet up Mondays, come and do the same thing. But it's hotter and we're not quite as crazy about it. So we're putting in a Hoagul culture, which is a organic method of planting things. That's going right across from the police station, we're putting in a new pollinator garden. This fall, we planted about a thousand bulbs. You know, on a crazy day when you talk to me, I might want this to become a literal botanical garden as a marketing ploy. I might want it to become an arboretum because there's beautiful trees there. But one big initiative, whether we do that officially or unofficially, is we will and are going to put really nice plant IDs on all of our trees, shrubs and perennials. So that any visitor who drops in can learn, oh, that's a beautiful thing, what is it, is it a rose? No, it's a Dahlia. And there'll be a sign telling people it's a Dahlia. So yeah, it keeps me entertained as a Master Gardener, I like gardening. And then the other aspect is making it a community place to learn stuff, so we're doing events. So this, for instance, the event right now going on, just started, is people dropping off their nature's heart gallery, H apostrophe art gallery. And it's a heart themed biodegradable art that's just placed around the park for people to just look at in the winter. So that's the sort of thing we're doing, does that answer your question?
Partly, I think. So I think, you know, you know, I was, I was work, I worked with Carrie on this whole transfer, you know, to, to the nonprofit organization and on the agreement. And I guess the one thing, you know, I, I honestly, I don't go by that way, I haven't been to Center Park in maybe since, you know, late fall. And probably haven't done anything since then anyway. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, if you are making major changes to the plants, plantings or the beddings or, or the, the plants, that we kinda understand what the plan is. Because that was just part of the agreement, was that, you know, major changes would, would come to the board. Because we were kind of releasing the control over, over to another organization. So I just wanna point that out, that if, if you are doing those changes, please, you know, maybe come to us at the beginning of the summer and say, hey, this is what we're planning, you know, we're planning on putting a trail over here. Or we're gonna be, you know, taking this bed out and putting these new things in, just so that we're aware of what happens. And if anybody says, hey, what's going on?
Do you wanna be the liaison?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I can't because I cannot attend a meeting during the day. But so that's, that's one thing. I guess, I guess that's, that's my only thing about that is just making sure that, you know, you know, if you could run by us. And, you know, certainly having a liaison will, will be very, very helpful in that. The other thing that you, you brought up was you brought up this, a sign. And, and you're asking for approval, were you asking approval for the funds for the sign or were you? Okay, and then on the benches too. I mean, I, I think for both of those, I think the place to start would be with the Historical Commission and ask, asking their approval. And then, and then once we knew that you had their approval.
I don't wanna have approval for the benches from the Historical Commission because it's not a permanent, they're not, they have no jurisdiction over that. This would be something that we could pick up and move because it's made out of wood.
Specifically, Alison, I, I was specifically talking about the sign.
Oh, the sign, okay, the sign is, we'll go through the Historical Commission, yep, for sure.
Yeah, and I, I, just to chime in there, I think on something like what, what the sign would say and what it looks like, you know, if you work that out with the Historic Commission, then I think it would make, then at that point, it would make sense for it to come back to the Select Board for us to say, yeah, great, go with it. Rather than approving it now in the absence of seeing what, what the, you know, final proposal is, Alison.
I wasn't asking for any final approval, I just wanted a conceptual approval. I wanted to be able to say to the Historical Commission that the Select Board understands that it's good to have a sign that says Center Park somewhere and that, you know, within the, assuming that, you know, you all have faith that the Historical Commission will make it be a really nice sign. And I'm telling you that what I envision is something on the order of the pretty police sign that's already been approved by the Historical Commission because it's right in the middle. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, I think, I think what we try to avoid a, as a board is kind of getting involved in approvals. Like the same thing we, we do with the personnel and things like that, getting involved with approvals when it even has to go through a process before it would get to us. I don't know how you feel about it, Bernie, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's what I was trying to say, Alison, I, I think we, I don't think any, I don't think we as a board have any difficulty with, with the idea that, that you want to discuss this with the Historic Commission and see what you can come up with. But the approval to go ahead with something would come back to us after.
No, I, I understand, what I don't want is to spend hours and hours and then find that you didn't even want us to do it. So that's what I'm asking upfront. It doesn't have to be anything formal, it can just be a sort of a nod and a wink or whatever. But I don't wanna waste our time or your time or Historical Commission's time if you're gonna say, we didn't want that. So, so that, that's really what I'm asking.
So in theory, does anybody else on the Select Board have a, have, prefer not to have the Center Park folks in the Historic Commission consider this idea of having a sign? Are we all comfortable with that? Hearing none? I'll say, yep, we're comfortable with the process.
Good. But I do wanna go back to what Nathan said about wanting to, you know, know what we're gonna do in our garden beds before we do it. I'm sorry, but I don't feel like telling anybody ahead of time. I feel like I'm the Horticultural Director of Center Park and that's what our agreement says. And I, I just wanna be you to trust me that I will do it beautifully. Cause we have, and I don't, I don't mind if somebody wants to liaison with us and be part of the discussion. But, and you can go look at our website where we're gonna be talking about our events and, and our plans. But that's how I feel about it, so I just.
I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't wanna get in an argument about it and, you know, and I think you're, you're doing a great job there. But there is an agreement and the agreement does say that you will come to the board's selectmen. And so.
No, it says that we're in charge of all the planting beds. It says that we are in charge of all the planting beds and we'll, it doesn't say that, I don't remember reading, I mean, I helped write that thing, so I, I don't think so.
Maybe, maybe we can step back a little bit from this and look at it maybe from a little bit higher up perspective. And that is that, you know, it's, it's town land, it's been designated, you know, as a, as a center park for everybody in town to use. And Alison, you and the rest of your team are, are doing a great job at, at making it, you know, a welcoming place for people to visit. I, I think just sort of broadly though, because it's not a, a piece of private property that the Friends of the Center Park are responsible for. That it, it's, it's just an important kind of oversight and communication. It's important for general oversight and communication that, that the Select Board knows what's happening there. And I, I don't think Nathan intends to suggest that everything you wanna plant has to be run by us. Cause I don't think that's, I, I think the general idea is as the towns, you know, elected leadership, we, we should have a, an understanding of what's happening in the park. And so ask, so I think a liaison is a really good idea. And I think, second, just to think about periodically providing an update to the Select Board would be great. Just in the same way that we ask other entities in town that have a responsibility for some kind of town function or town property that we wanna be kept abreast of what's going on.
That's exactly right, Bernie, I think, you know, I was asking for a, a one time, what are your plans for this year?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's town property, you know, I think, understanding.
I can do it in a sense, I know exactly what the plans are, I think about them all the time, I'm a nutter for Center Park.
Okay, well, may, maybe in the spring, before you start, you could come and you could just, you know, show us, show us what your plans are.
Yeah, so maybe what, what we could say is a, you know, a sort of, as you develop your plans for the year, Alison. And then again, you've already got a lot of stuff planned for this year. And I know you provided some of that in the material you sent us, which is great. I, I think what, what we're, at least what Nathan and I are describing is just get into a regular routine of an annual update to the Select Board that would happen sort of at the appropriate time of the year in terms of your planning, you know, based on the season and when, and when you would wanna, so when you'd like, when, when that should happen with us so that if there are any things that we have comments on or, or opinions about, you know those in advance of then launching your, you know, your plans for the year.
Well, we, we have our annual meeting in March, so we will have all of our plans approved by our own board in March. So we could certainly, either the liaison has been part of that and sees what we do it in March or we do it in April with you like this on a Zoom meeting or something. But that's, that's our cycle is that, we, we do our planning in the winter and March is where we pull it all together. So yeah, that would work.
Yeah, so you should just think about when, when, when would it be helpful to you and the rest of the Center Park team to have a, a, a update with us? Would it be more helpful after your annual meeting when you've, annual, when you've made your plans? Or maybe sort of your draft plans before you have that meeting? And, and that could be something you, you think about and suggest to us when you think that would be a good time, when would be a good time? That sound good?
Yeah, I, 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 sure.
Barney, it's Annette Lee on the phone, may I speak up or is this not?
Hi, Annette, I don't see you there, but sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on John's phone because.
Oh, I see, you're John's iPhone John, got it.
Yeah, sorry about that. I guess I feel as a resident and a neighbor to Center Park, this park is of course for everybody. And I think it's being directed in a way that maybe not everybody agrees is what they would like to see it happen. And I would love there to be an opportunity where other people could give input. To me, it used to be a sanctuary and it has now been opened up to basically East Street. No longer a cozy little sneak in the park kind of thing. And other people have other opinions and it sounds like it's, it's being usurped. And that confuses me when it's public land.
I, I guess I do, can you explain what you mean by East Street? I don't understand what you're saying.
East Street, the, that's, you've taken all the thicket out, there are no little shrubs or trees anymore. And the whole thing is just of, it's opened, it used to be a little cloistered garden. And now it's, it just looks like you've opened up the whole corner. But that's just my opinion and that's how I feel about it and other people with whom I've spoken feel similarly. So what I'm saying is there are other people with different opinions and one person's vision is just being executed and I'm not sure, I think that's fair.
Well, we have a whole board and a committee that works on it, if you'd like to join our committee, you're most welcome to.
Well, maybe, you know, I'm, I'm thinking though, as Annette's talking, you know, how the, the mosquito has a whole, you know, has a board and, and, and writers, et cetera, that they're doing their work, you know, all year long. But then they have their open, I've forgotten what they call it. But you know, when the public is invited to come and meet with them and discuss things about how the mosquito is running or their policies, et cetera. You know, Alison, I think it might be worth a good thing to think about having an open meeting before you finalize your plans for the year. And, and have a, an opportu, you know, publicize it so that community members have an opportunity to come and offer their opinions and their, you know, desires and, and have a dialogue with you about, you know, what, what the community as a whole would like going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Alison, I think then the way we, what I see happening next is two things that we've discussed is one is come, come, create some, an opportunity for the community. Some kind of community forum where people can come and talk about what they'd like to see at Center Park. And the, and the friends could share their plans and see if they can accommodate some of those suggestions. And then secondly, that you come to the Select Board, sounds like ideally sometime, you know, early spring and share your plans for the year. And maybe that could happen after you have an, provide an opportunity for the community to have some input. And then I don't wanna, I, I see on the time, I don't wanna forget that you have a request here. Did you, the no mow in May for the Center Park? I'm wondering if we could take that up at another meeting since there's a little time. And just so that we will put it in, we can have it in Tim's administrative report as a motion. And you could provide a little more description of what, what it is, so we have it ahead of time. And then we could vote on it. And then I know, and similarly with the, the fifteenth anniversary at Old Home Day, same thing, if you want the, the Select Board to, you know, issue a proclamation about the fifteenth anniversary or.
Oh, it doesn't have to be that big a deal, just, I'll eat ice cream with us, that's all.
Well, but if you, or if you want a Select Board member to participate in some way, then I'd reach out to that person and, and then have, have them just report back to the Select Board that just to say, you know, this is what I'm thinking of doing and is that everybody fine with the Select Board? If I represent the Select Board this way, if, if an individual on the boards represents the Select Board that way. So, and so, and then the other thing was about the wooden benches. So I would ask that whoever you have, you know, are you thinking somebody's gonna, yeah, you said artisans to design this? So I think we as the Select Board should probably know a little bit more about, we should play, we should have some oversight, even if they're movable benches, but just just to have you come back to us with, with maybe the, the designs or the winning, you know, the winning artists.
It might not be this year, we don't have any money to, to buy benches now. But I just wanted to get the idea so that maybe somebody would, you never know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a really good question to put out at a community forum too.
Right.
Right, the question of more benches, more seating, less, you know, more, more wild, more planted. You know, get, get input from the community at large. And then I, I, and I know you that in Tim's report, I think there is a couple of specific motions about things that are coming up. So um.
Right. So can I talk about those?
Well. Yeah, I think we've got them in the packet and I think we're probably fine approving them, Allison.
Okay.
So, and I'm just thinking about the time. So um, you're welcome to stay because the next thing is the town administrators' report. And so we'll, maybe I'll ask Tim if you don't mind him to do those.
It was in, the motion was in seven uh, in this, um, in this section.
Oh, it is in this section. Perfect, perfect. Okay. So um, why don't we move right into that then? So Kate, have you got the motion in front of you?
Okay, I'll move, move the select board vote to approve the use of the common by the Carlisle Garden Club on Earth Day, Saturday, April twenty third. And on Friday, May twentieth, for setting up for the Garden Club Plant Sale. And on Saturday, May twenty first, for the Garden Club Plant Sale.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Great, let's do a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lolo, I.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Good. All right, Allison, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be in touch. Okay, good night. Alrighty, Tim, we're on the administrators' report.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, first item is that I, I've been in touch with the tech engineers regarding filing an application. With the Commonwealth Small Bridges Construction Grant Program that's due in April. You'll probably remember Tech is the engineering firm that has been designing the improvements. Proposed improvements at Curve Street and Maple Street Bridges. We got a state grant about eighty thousand dollars to, to do the design. And uh, the, the designs are complete. And now the state has announced a, a round of funding uh, for the construction of, of those improvements. So I would, would recommend that we file that grant application. The, the cost of the repairs for both bridges is approximately a three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And this, this, uh, this was all undertaken underway before the DPW truck went into the drink. About a week or so ago. But i- in, and I did ask Gary, I said, well, you know, if we had done this project, would it have made a difference? And he thought probably with a dump truck of that, that size and weight, it wouldn't have made a large difference. But he did think that uh, having the, the improvements and the new guard rail certainly would have kept the passenger vehicle out of the uh. Out of the, the brook. So with your permission, well, we, we may as well apply for the uh, the, the grant for the funding. Since we've done the design and, you know, it wouldn't uh, would not be coming, uh, the funds wouldn't be coming from the town. I know what, uh, there was comments at the time that it seemed like an awful expensive uh, kind of prepare uh, to those bridges. But uh. It, it. That's what they, they estimate for the construction. So we can, we can file it and, and chances are we will get funded. The program used to be both design and construction. They split it in two a few years ago when they, they had budget problems. But they, they have more or less said that they, they intend to fund the projects that they fund, funded the design of. So we've got a good chance of getting the money.
Tim, um, I remember when that project was, you know, presented originally. And there were some design elements that I was looking for. Is this the time to be making sure that we, you know, we?
Yeah, the engineers will be happy to present the design. The design's complete. But we have until the April to submit a, an application. So I can ask that they submit the completed design to the board and you can, you can weigh in on that if you like.
Yeah, it, it makes a big difference to have, you know, to not have the, you know, galvanized.
Yeah.
Stuff. I really, they're um, concrete has been very careful, I know, about, you know, materials they've used. And they look much more rustic and rural than, you know, uh, four ninety-five. And so.
Okay.
Kind of like to make sure that that, those elements get in there.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Especially that part over on Maple Street, right? I mean, that, oh my God, you put that galvanized stuff, it'd just be awful.
Yeah.
That ruin a lot of pictures moving forward, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's something we can put on a future agenda, right, Tim?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, I'll bring that back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, I know in principle, we all support the idea of applying for the grant.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to be sure that this doesn't fall through the cracks, that's all.
Right.
It's all been designed and, you know, it gets built and I was like, ah, look at that.
Right.
Yeah, no, exactly. Well, that was our hesitation for, for not even moving forward with it, right? Was the.
Yeah.
Yeah, what was the appearance, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the, the second item attached to my packet, you, you'll find a letter from Town Council, Tom Harrington. Uh, requesting an increase in his billing rates effective July first. And uh, me, ours and Harrington have only increased our rates one time previously in nine years as town council. And uh, I think we, we all agree that uh, the town is well served by them. I think that uh, we had a discussion a few weeks ago. When I met with Barney and Dave, and, and I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, either one of you. But uh, you know, I, 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 I think. Tom, Thomas from has saved us a lot of money over the years as well. So it's not just their billing rate, it's that they're good at what they do and they, they keep us on the straight and narrow. And, and I think. You know, he submitted some documentation that uh, he believes the retainer is, is set at too low of a rate. Because of the, you know, the amount of use by town boards and committees. And I think, you know, he's demonstrated that the town's been getting a good deal on that retainer and he recommends increasing it. And I know that Dave and Barney had some thoughts about that when we met a week or so ago. But I do support the, the request for an increase.
I, I think that we are very, very well served by Tom and company.
I, I, uh, do we need to have controls on uh, you know, who has access to the? And how, how, you know?
Well, we, we, we do, we do now. They, they, they have to go through me to get access to town council. So, you know, we do try to vet the requests ahead of time and find out if they've.
Unless you're a select board, right?
Well, that's right, no.
Yeah, but also, um, Tim, isn't it not true, it's true what you say, but then once, if you gave, I'll just say it out of context. But say you gave Board of Health the contact, then at that point, the number, the amount of time that they use is not, they don't check with you every time they call at that point, right?
Not, not if it's the same matter.
Right.
They can't get on the phone and say, oh yeah, I've got three other things I want to run, but you know, it has to be related to the request.
Right, but we could, we could put a control in like a time control, I guess, but that would really be between us and Harrington, right? Signal if it's.
Right.
Kind of warming up the hours.
Has Tom indicated that there might be any abuse at all, Tim?
Not, not, not abuse. No, I mean, he, he does a lot of work with the planning board and the conservation commission. But they, you know, they, they go through the proper channels, they request. Uh, you know, and, and if it's a different matter, Tom asks that they come back and make a second request. He doesn't just keep the meter running, you know, on the same board unless they've, they've got authorization.
And you can see from the request, the letter that um, you know, while we have been on a retainer. Um, and that um, you know, Tom was suggesting that their preference would be we, you know, go on to an hourly. Uh, but he's obviously making the proposal to change the retainer at the same time. And uh, you know, David and Tim and I were in agreement that, that the retainer is absolutely the way to go for our town. And we, I, I have not had a chance to, I told Tom when he sent this to me. That um, we would be discussing it and then I'd get back to him. And I think the one thing that uh, Tim and David and I discussed was just ask, see if we could get a commitment for a length of time. That he, this would remain the retainer. So maybe it's a three-year um, commitment. Or, you know, see, see what he was open to doing, open to doing on, in that, on that line.
That's a good.
Yeah, what's the, what's the current, like, um, when does the current contract end? And what does it say as far as how often he can increase the retainer?
It's, but he suggested three years.
It's yearly though, right? Isn't it, Tim?
Yes, it's, it's year to year, yeah.
Yeah.
The retainer, the retainer, not the contract clearly, but the retainer is?
Well, well, both. Yeah, it's more or less an annual agreement. Uh, we don't, we don't have a multi-year agreement with town council.
Oh, we don't?
No.
I, I don't remember us signing that every, every year.
Well, we haven't because he didn't come back and request, well, I see what you're saying. Well, I g- I guess it's, that's a good point, Tim. I guess the.
Was it an auto renew?
Yeah, it's kind of an auto renew because he didn't change.
Right, because he didn't change.
The rate, yeah.
Right.
I mean, we, we should be clear for people listening. I mean, generally in legal circles, the term retainer simply means a payment we would make each month. But that the actual charges would go up and down. And in Harrington's case, it's a fixed, it's flat pricing. Which is why Barney, and we, we all agree, I think it's a very good deal for the town the way we are. So he calls it a retainer, we calling it a retainer, but it's really flat pricing. And I agree with Barney, it would be nice if he could hold, he has held it. So in his note, he suggests that he's held it for a while. Uh, and he also indicated that he hadn't raised his, you know, the hourly charges that they normally would charge. And he only does that every third year, I guess is what he was saying. But yeah, it would be nice if we could get a commitment to hold that now, you know, increased amount for multi-year. I agree with that, but.
Yeah, we, we probably should have written agreement to that effect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's kind of a slippery slope and he hasn't done it in six years. But um, yeah, I mean, I agree with that. Just, I do want to just point out one thing and, and um, it, it, because you're absolutely right, David, that the re- your retainer is a fixed thing. But it's only a fixed thing for a certain bucket.
Right.
Items that, um, so for instance, when, uh, incorrect me if I'm wrong, Tim. But there, there are, there are things that come up that are outside of that retainer. And we are then paying the hourly rate wage that is, that is in the contract.
That's right. For lit- litigation, labor matters and, and certain uh, major projects, if you will, or, or outside of the. Yeah.
Yeah, like, like, uh, like a forty B would be outside.
Exactly, exactly.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and for those cases, I think, you know, just from us, from our side. And I haven't been on the select board during one of those costly things. But um, it probably is a good practice in those cases for us to get kind of an estimate of, you know, charges. And some kind of periodic check-in on how we're doing against that estimate. And whether, you know, we should just, you can't really control those things, but you can certainly maybe nibble at the edges of them to make sure that. And I, again, I don't think, Tom doesn't do this, but we don't want to over, over lawyer it, you know, just keep.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Dave, and, and I think that he does that. If I'm remembering the last, I'm forgetting what the name of the road was, but over there near Luke. You know, we, he was, we, we were always in, in, informed as to where we were on expenses. Um, I think it was like every other select board meeting, Tim, or something like that, you were letting us know.
Right, right. Okay, we can.
All right, so um.
Get up, Tom.
Yeah, it sounds like we're comfortable with this, um, the increase in the retainer. And um, between me and Tim, we'll, we'll get back to Tom and figure out. Both what, an agreement that we can sign and also if we can, some kind of a multi-year arrangement. Good.
Very good. Okay, the next item in my report is that we've retained uh, Human Resources, Inc. To perform a map market uh, study analysis of our non-union wages and salaries. The last full update was done in two thousand and fourteen, you probably recall that. The, that was a full wage and classification study. This would be more of an interim uh, update, uh, if you will, to make sure that the positions are, are. On the wage scale have been reviewed and are fairly compensated in terms of the comparable communities that we do use. For wage study purposes. I think when we did the study in two thousand and fourteen, we uh, said we'd updated every five or six years. So it's about eight years now, so it's time to do that kind of a, uh, an update. Uh, it also would, uh, you know, stave off the many requests we get for reclassification of positions. If we would uh, look at all the positions on the scale. And uh, we wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be putting any position before another. We do them all at the same time. So that'll be getting underway and it should take a, a couple of months. And it's the same consultant that did the initial wage study.
Barney, may I?
Yes.
Um, so I think this is absolutely awesome that we're doing this. I, if, I thought, was it the two thousand and fourteen one that there was the long delay? Or was there one before the two thousand and fourteen? I just want, it's my question, my question is. Yeah, and you know, so my, my question is, we had a wage and classification study. And then do we, do we have a process where we can make, take action on that? On, on that information without, because I'm not being very eloquent. I think the last time we were waiting for a non-existent personnel committee to tell us we needed to. Accept those, and that was like a five-year period of time or something, or three-year period of time. Be- before we actually got it, nothing against the personnel committee that we have now, they didn't exist at the time. But what, what is the process that we would go through when we get the recommendations? What is that next process? And if there's any hiccup in the road, is there something we can do?
Well, I think we, we found out last year that the wage and salary schedule actually needs to be voted each year by town meeting. And we hadn't done that in a number of years. And we had a wage study in two thousand and one, then we didn't do it again till two thousand and fourteen. So we're really kind of overdue for an, uh, an update to that schedule. So I, I would say based on the recommendations, whatever, whatever they are from uh. Uh, you know, whether, where the, where the salaries are in terms of the marketplace, the town meeting would have to approve any adjustments to that schedule.
And who would make the recommendation? Would it be the select board, I mean, to the personnel board, to the select board, and then the select board to the town?
It would be, uh, well, it, it, I think the personnel board would be involved. If they, if they're not involved, the, the, the personnel administrator would recommend to the board.
Unfortunately, not you. Okay.
This, the select board would, would put it forward as an article at town meetings. So ultimately, it, it would be your call as to what, what adjustments went to town meeting. Obviously, with, with input from FinCom, because, you know, they'd have to be funded.
Right, and so we would be looking at next spring.
More than likely, yeah, I, I think it would be hard to do it mid-year in the fall, but yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Plus, you need time to budget it and we're, that, we're past that for this year's budget.
Right, that's why I say next spring, yes, and not a special town meeting because that's mid-budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We really want to have it by the, you know, early fall this year. So we, it can uh, inform the budget preparations. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, very good. Also, as part of my report, there's a request from the Boston Brain Tumor Society for permission to uh, conduct a portion of their bike ride. In Carlisle on Sunday, May fifteenth, and they've attached the expected bike route as well. They've made this request a number of years in the past. I don't think it, doesn't appear. Yeah, yeah, so if you would, that'd be great.
I move, we approve uh, the National Brain Tumor Society um, to conduct a portion of their bike ride in Carlisle. On Sunday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
And as long as, and, and they communicate with the police department.
Uh, yes, that's contingent on there.
Discussion.
Discussion with the police department and that they use removable um, road markings.
I think you got all the things that are normally in there, Kate.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, may I have a second?
A little help from my friend.
Back in.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lolo, I.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and also with test, my. Okay. And also with test in my report, you'll see an email from Debbie Bentley on behalf of the cultural council. They're going to be soliciting ideas from the public for this year's poppy display. On the common and there's a flyer in there that describes. Their program. Ultimately, this will come back to the board because. This, the poppy project is on the common. It's, it's town property and you, you'll have to ultimately approve whatever. Project is chosen, but this is more of a heads up that they're going to be seeking public input on that this year.
This year they're going to use opium poppies.
Is that a fundraiser?
Kidding, Debbie.
It's going to raise something, but I'm not quite sure what.
All right. And then we've got the draft. Agenda, proposed agenda for February twenty-second. Such as it is, we'll be meeting on that. Shortly. I'm sure that's subject to change at some level, but right now we're planning on a joint coordination meeting with the finance committee. Town moderator to talk about town meeting. As I said, the goal is to close the warrant the following meeting, March the eighth. And we'll see, but the, the draft warrant, I was working on today about thirty-one articles. I still don't know how many we're getting from the governance task force, but some number between five and twelve, I think, but. We'll, we'll, we'll see. Well, actually, I mean, a lot of that list is Kate pointed out. I mean, a lot of that stuff doesn't require bylaw.
Right.
You know, I think they're confusing recommendations with. Bylaws that need to go to town meeting. So there are probably three or four things that could, could be up for town meeting.
Yeah.
Action.
Tim, on that list of warrant articles, I'm, I'm thinking about what Wayne Davis had suggested. At our last conversation about this, which was that we. Should look at whether there's some other, some of the items that are not in the consent agenda could go into that. Is that, so, so is that something you would work out with Wayne? To, and sort of come back with a proposal about that?
Yes, yeah, I, I recommended a, a number of articles to be added to the consent agenda. Town council's working on it too. We're, we're going to run it by Wayne. And ultimately it's the board's call. It's your warrant. It's not, you know, the moderator doesn't. Technically, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking that would be helpful though.
But it makes sense. Yeah, there are a lot of things on there.
Some things, yeah.
You know, like a road acceptance or, you know, non-controversial things that could be.
Right. So you, so you and, and Tom are going to work that out.
We're gonna, yeah, well, we're gonna add some things to that.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's, that's it for the report.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just, just a reminder to all of us. So we've just said that. We want to have the, A, where there's not going to be an LEPC. Update at the next meeting, right? Because they're going to go to once a month. And that also, the bridge design, I don't know, will be ready next time, but at some point. That would be on our agenda. Which is kind of a good segue, Luke, for you to. If you want to make your liaison report about the assessors. Office and some of the things that they're working on.
Yeah, so I had a nice chat with, chat with Ken Mustello. The, the chair, if you will, of the Board of Assessors. And he brought up a couple of things. One is. The, the number two position. He's talked with Brian a bit and, and they're thinking of beefing that position up. Basically making it more than just a, an administrative assistant. Essentially making it someone, yeah, not like a true. You know, full number two, right? But, but somebody who can do a lot of what, what the number one can do, but also too. Beefing it up enough so they could actually do some of the work the Patriot does. Like some of the assessments and, you know, some of the, the things that. Patriot charges a small fortune for. And, you know, they don't necessarily. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to. You know, say things out of class, but, but, but things that could be done better and, and probably. More efficiently and effectively in-house. Yeah, one of the main things being the, the assessments, right? And, you know, having somebody that actually goes out to the properties and properly evaluates and thoroughly about, because this was all stuff that Melissa did. And. You know, with the position changing a bit and Brian trying to implement more things. You know, it'd be, it'd be good to have a number two who could do those sorts of things. So what they're trying to determine now is they're running some numbers to see if they can keep it. Essentially cost neutral. You know, by, by, if they can pull some of the stuff out of Patriots contracts. You know, they should be able to, to keep it close. So. Within the next couple of weeks, they should have some numbers together. And. I, I don't know if they'll be ready to present in a couple of weeks, but, but that, that's what the hope is because. They'd really like to get the number two hired sooner rather than later and really start doing some, some reevaluations and reassessments. You know, because as Ken said, you know, with the way that the housing market went, you know, over the past couple of years. You know, the assessments and the reevals haven't really shown that sort of growth. So. You know, there's probably some lost, lost tax revenue. So. Yeah, so that, that's one thing. And then the other thing was. How Joan came before us and asked about two pieces to that, to that tax. Was it deferment or? The, the, the tax program. And one was raising the, the ceiling, right? The other one was. Implementing a subsidized three percent rate. On, on any deferred taxes, right? And Ken sent me a. A PowerPoint presentation. I, I can forward it to everybody. And essentially. They came out with, based on the number of taxes, if we raise it to, you know, sixty-five or seventy thousand, the number of houses that could be eligible. Would be like sixty-four. And if you say half of them. Would be eligible for that or would take advantage of that. I mean, probably wouldn't be that right, but, you know, just throwing that number out there. The potential deferred tax revenue is about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year. So, and, and it's significant. And, and the other piece too, is, is he said with inflation. You know, going up at the rate that it's going up at, if we subsidize that, it actually. It's almost like giving them free money, you know, it's, it's incentivizing people to take advantage of that because the, the interest rate would be so low. And subsidized by the town that, that. The, and it's not even the, the residents who currently live there. It's, it would be the heirs of that. That resident that would actually benefit from this. So it's just something we really need to strongly consider, you know, if we do want to do that. You know, because people may take advantage of it just because they can, right? And it's a, and it's a tax deferment. System. So again, he's going to pull some, some more numbers together with that. I'll send you what, what he sent me. It's kind of a, just a very generic. PowerPoint, but, but, you know, I can have them. And again, you know, he said it's obviously it's not their decision, right? It's. It's just something that he wanted to bring to our attention because that's, that's a pretty huge swing if people. Do decide to take advantage and. Yeah, so I, I can see if they want to come in in a couple of weeks. You know, to discuss it further just because they have a better understanding of the numbers. And I, I know that they were going to talk to FinCom. Lynn Lipinski is, is their liaison. And I know Ken's been in touch with Lynn and she was going to bring it to, to finance committee. So. Yeah, so just a couple of things to consider.
Well, the thing that would make this all work is if. Finally passes that legislation that where they are the ones, they defer the tax. In other words. Right. They, they backfill. And so we don't see any deferment, really. The, the resident gets the deferment, but. We don't have any of that. And then that I could see us, you know, pulling the trigger, but four hundred Ks is a, a big. Pill to swallow.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, like Ken said, it may not get there, right? You never know how many people are gonna, are gonna. But still, right?
You have to figure on worst case scenario.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's not, that's half a worst case, right?
Well, yeah, that's true. You're right. I mean, or, yeah.
Right. And we, and we've currently got that warrant article on the, going into town meeting. So we definitely need to. Figure this out before that. And, and if we're going to change it, you know, change it. So. I think we should put this on if, if you think, you know, for two weeks from now, if. If that makes sense for Brian and Ken to be able to put that together and come forward and tell us more about it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I think they should be able to. Yeah.
Great. Well, that's, that's a good, that's a good catch, I think. Right? So we really understand what it is we're, we're authorizing.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah. Um, I think it would, I don't know. Have they had any conversation with Joan Ingersoll? So she has a heads up about this?
Um, I, I don't know. I, yeah, I can't say one way or the other. I, you know, we didn't talk about that. I know. Lynn, but, but yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm sure if I poked Ken, he, he would go.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing to do. So it doesn't come as a surprise.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, well, she may not even know the, the, the implications, right? You know, I mean. Because you look at it on the surface, you go, that's not bad. And, yeah, you know, and then. And you're helping people out. But, yeah, in a town like Carlisle, that's, that's a significant chunk of change.
Yeah. Good. Thanks. Any other liaison reports?
I have a quick one. Tim, you didn't, you didn't forward that letter of apology that we got, did you?
I, I did not, no.
Okay. Uh, well, okay, I got a, this is a, a police department liaison report. Got a letter of apology to the board, actually. From a young man who. On the night of the twenty-third of May of last year, destroyed a porta potty. In the upper fields near the playground at the Banda Davis Fields. And. He was summoned to court for, and for various criminal charges for the incident and damage to the property was in excess of fourteen hundred dollars. And the district attorney's office offers, offered him a diversion program. And out of that came several tasks that he had to do. And one of which was writing this letter of apology to us and. Just wanted to let everybody know that this, he's now completed all the conditions of the, the agreement. The criminal charges will not be pursued and he will not have a criminal record from this incident. But what I really wanted to point out with this. This was done in cooperation with the police department in diverting this kid into the program. And. I just think that's a really great program. And this was the, happens to be one, the young adult diversion program, but. The police also have C four RJ, which is communities where we sort of justice, which I think they divert some kids into as well. Department at work.
That's great. Thanks. Any other liaison reports? Alrighty, well, let's move on then. We have the minutes in our packet. I think it actually, is it just one set of minutes? Jen, I think so, right? Or no, it's two, right? Because one is the special meeting last week. And then the, the minutes from the actual, our regular select board meeting from two weeks ago.
January.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so can I have a motion unless somebody feels the need to do them separately? Could we move? Have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move approval of the minutes of Tuesday, January fifth. And.
February, February one.
And Tuesday, February first.
Did you get your twenty, twenty-fifth? Did you say twenty-fifth?
Twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah, did you say twenty-fifth or fifth?
That, uh, January, the January one?
Yeah. Twenty, yeah, I thought you did too. So it's the twenty.
I said twenty-fifth.
Great. May I have a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote. All this in favor. Arnold, I.
Usco, Lolo, I.
Brown, I.
No, don't lie.
Read I.
Excellent. The minutes pass. And then on the warrant. Warrant that I signed. I, I do want to point out something that's just, you, you may have noticed, David may have noticed that one of them is, was for a million two. And in that, we had the, that was a big one. We had our monthly assessment payment for the high school. And we also had the DPW truck, the, what, what does he call it? The, was the one for the cemetery. That was paid for out of the cemetery perpetual care account for a hundred thousand. But in that one also is the, is the most recent invoice from town council and. Just so you see, you can see just in this one bill of fifteen-five, I'm sorry, thirteen-five. Twenty, ten thousand was other projects and. Thirteen-five were retainers. So we, we do, you know, we do rack up some substantial bills on other things. Including in this one is seventy-seven hundred dollars for the dog hearings.
Oh, yeah. Hearing. Have we followed up with the first one? And have they been in compliance? And do we need to bring them back?
They, we have followed up. They did comply after a. A letter from town council. To providing the identification that was required to the police department. The fine, which was not part of our. Our recommendations, but was a separate fine that they'd been issued by the dog officer. I wrote a follow-up email. A to thank, because, because we got a, an email with the, with the. From the dog owner when she complied with the identification requirements. And so I wrote her back and said, thank you for doing that. And, and just asked if, that I've reminded her about this outstanding fine and. Would be great if she could pay that as well. And haven't heard anything back. And as far as I know, I haven't heard from town clerk that they've paid that. That's, that's not, the, the Concord Court said there's really nothing they'll do. To require them to pay that. So. That's, we're kind of stuck with that. All right.
On the million two, so you, you said the, thank you for breaking that out, but. You said the regional monthly payment, but you mean the semi-annual or annual or something, right? It's not month.
The five hundred ninety-five thousand. Well, according to the way Kelly has written this, she says February twenty-twenty-two monthly assessment payment. I think you're right. It must be for the half year. Right? Does that sound right?
Not a half year.
Yeah. Or Tim, I don't know if you know better than I would.
Monthly, because it's. It was only.
Okay, so that means, but that would mean every, I mean. Every other time we have warrants, we have that big bill, right? So that, is that what happens? We have about six hundred K a month, every other warrant.
Yeah. Double check with Kelly on that.
You're, you're signing, yeah, just next time, just check that out. I mean, it's probably right.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that the school bill, which is eighty-three thousand, that warrant. Includes thirty-seven thousand to second wind water systems, which means their water is now drinkable.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
And just, and just one clarification, Barney, the. Hundred thousand dollars from the DPW cemetery funds was for a tractor.
Oh, not a truck. Okay.
Not a truck. It was for a tractor.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, it was like a front loader, right?
Yeah, it was something that they could get around. The, the one they had is very old and this one's much smaller. So they can get around the tombstones much easier.
Yeah.
Hey Luke, did, did they ever get the schools tractor?
Yeah, I think they did work that out, but I, I think it actually went to. Yeah, I think it went to the tractor. Store or whatever the heck the name was. Yeah, but I think. Right?
I think. The trade-in went, they couldn't block the trade-in.
Right, but, but I think they just got it tuned up and, and. Sent back. You're right. They didn't pay a premium on it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you all. I know it's. Well, thank you all. I know it's been a long night and I really appreciate, um, I think we got a lot done and, uh, so thank you for your endurance.
I move, we adjourn. Great job, Barney.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote. Arnold eye.
Uskalo eye.
Brown eye.
No doubt eye.
Dog says eye.
Okay, good. And thank you, Tim and Jen.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Night, John and Christina and Mary Lynn.
That's great. Good night, all.